I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I ask for a roll call, please?
Jim Batson.
Here.
Cara Benjamin.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Kara Drumke.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Sonal Pulkarni.
Here.
We note all members present. Quick review of the agenda so everybody knows what to expect. We will begin tonight with public comment. I will be going in the order of the sign-in sheet. Everybody will have three minutes. I will give you a gentle warning when your three minutes are up to please wrap up your comments. If you did not manage to sign in, that doesn't mean that you've missed your chance. Whenever we've been through the list, we will get to anybody who did not sign in who would like to address the board. After, I also want to note, I think many of you have been to board meetings before and are familiar with our board protocols for public comment. We do not engage in discussion about the comments that we hear. It's not because we're ignoring you. Many times, comments are about things that are not on our agenda for the evening, in which case, we're not giving proper notice to the public who would have wanted to come for that conversation. So it's not that we will ignore you. One of the reasons that we do get people's names and phone numbers is so that if there is something to follow up with, one of our administrators will be back in touch with you about your question or concern. So at the beginning of the meeting, we will have our invitation for public comment with a three-minute time limit. Then we will hear from our teachers' union. After that, we will hear our student school board representative reports, review our FOIA requests, and have some good news. After that, we will get to our consent vote agenda. The consent vote includes items that are routinely approved together in one motion. Things like hiring, approving minutes, some employment matters, educational tour requests. These are all things that we have discussed in committee and are included in the public materials for our board meeting for transparency. Are there any board members wishing to remove any of the consent vote items this evening? Okay, seeing none, the consent vote will stand. After the consent vote, we will have three items for action. We've got some employment of employees. These are hires that came in after our committee meeting. We have a very small board governance handbook update that we will discuss and approve. And then we will review the contract for the Vernon Hills High School graduation venue. We have a few items for discussion tonight. We are going to receive an update on our equity policy. And for any of our community members and students that have come here because of a genuine curiosity and concern about the district's view on equity, I sincerely urge you to stay for that item to hear an update on our equity policy. We will also have a presentation on 2023 summer school, as well as a capital projects overview. After that, we will have a review of the regulatory fiscal year '23 employee compensation report. We will hear our superintendent's report from Dr. Herman. We will share some board comments and events or training that we have attended. Do we have an IASB report this evening? Okay, so we will have a report from our delegate for the Illinois Association of School Boards. Do we have a CEDOL report this evening? Nothing for CEDOL. And I do not believe we have any other reports to discuss. We will review future agenda items. We have several that are listed in our board packet. And once we complete that, we will move to adjourn the meeting. There is no closed session this evening. So without further ado, I'd like to start a public comment and invite Rania Belibis to the podium.
Hello. My name is Rania Bala. I'm a student at Libertyville High School, the same as every other student. So why, unlike every other student, do I have to fight for day off? Four years ago, I watched students from my community, including my own sister, stand before you like I am today, asking you for your support and including Eid on the school calendar. I watched them beg for something that I believe should be a right. The year after that, their hardware paid off and it was announced that Eid would be a day off. You can't even imagine my excitement as an eighth grader in Oak Grove, knowing that for the first time, including my holiday matters to my school. I felt like I belonged as much as every student. And now imagine my disappointment as a senior, having to fight so that future generations of Muslim students can feel the exact same. For a district that pushes diversity and inclusivity, this is ultimately a step back. Our mission statement is to be daring. The last letter G for global, and the first statement under that category is we value diversity. Is valuing diversity really maintaining only Christian holidays? Is it taking away a day that we have fought for for over eight years now? Is it continuing to let students who are of a religious minority struggle in comparison to students who are given their holidays off as a right? We are not even asking for official recognition of the holiday, only the day off, whether it be a non-attendance day or a teacher institute day, for the most important day of the year as a Muslim, or our education, to not choose over it. Last year, while it was an honest mistake, Eid was not off, and it was a great example as to why an excused absence is not a reasonable option. I was not only stressed about missing all of my classes and having to make everything up on top of my two jobs and other extracurriculars, but school not being off still found a way to impede on my holiday. In regards to last year, Snowflake, a program where high school mentors, middle school students within the area fall on the day rate. Snowflake has been something that I've been a part of since seventh grade, from participating in to planning the event for the past three years. I would have never had to choose between participating in Snowflake last year and staying home to continue celebrating with my family had the day been off, since it wouldn't have been scheduled on a day without school in session. And ultimately, I had to go, taking six hours out of my biggest holiday, while my family was left at Eid dinner with an empty chair reserved for me at the table. We are not asking for anymore, only to retain something that we have already spent years advocating for. As you have seen for the past eight years, we are such a big and growing population that we will continue to attain leadership positions, advocate for ourselves, and continue to push for this one day off. Even though I will not be affected by this in the future, the rest of my community will, and today is proof that generations to come will not give up. I want to add that we are completely open and willing to work with the board on this issue to explore any alternative that works for everyone. If other schools in our area like Stevenson, Nutria, and Grayslake Central can provide a non-attendance day for religious minority holidays, we can too. It's important for us to get this day off because we believe it makes us as a community feel equal and like we belong. As you are voting on this, think about all the people in this room and how they are only a fraction of the community that will be affected by this decision for years to come. And now, if anyone in the audience agrees with me...
If you could wrap up your comments, that's three minutes. Thank you. No, you can finish your sentence.
If anyone in the audience agrees with me tonight and believes that religious minorities should continue having non-attendance days during their holidays, please stand up.
Thank you, Rania. Next is Abid Khan.
Hi, everyone. Hope you're all doing well. My name is Abid Khan, and I'm the co-president of the LHS Muslim Students Association. And I just wanted to share my own personal experience as to why I believe removing Eid and other non-Christian religious holidays off the calendar would be a huge setback. Last year, due to miscalculation on what day Eid would be, we did not have the holiday off. Though this miscalculation was not the board's fault, it does serve as an example of what our holidays would be like in the future with the secular calendar. That night, as we broke our fast for the last time after 30 days of not eating or drinking during the daytime, 30 days of extra supplication, and 30 days of balancing all of this with schoolwork, clubs, and sports, I did not have time to celebrate. Instead, I stayed up that night doing practice problems for the math test that I had to miss the next day and catching up on AP US History prep for our upcoming final. It was also my responsibility to help vacuum the house and help prep the food for the family and friends coming over the next morning. That next day on Eid, as I tried to celebrate with family and friends, I dragged my AP US History textbook and my math notes around, asked my brother to help test me on US History terminology and explain limit statements, while he asked me to help him with AP Econ re-response practice. Imagine having Christmas with a textbook on the dinner table. That was what our Eid looked like. Even though we did take the day off, the looming knowledge that we were missing school managed to ruin the whole point of the holiday, to celebrate 30 days of sacrifice. These situations are not just individual to me. I know that for a fact because my brother and I weren't the only people I saw celebrating Eid with textbooks and work they needed to make up in hand. Therefore, I ask you all as the Board of Education to please not disappoint us as members of religious minorities by revoking the decision to have religious holidays like Eid, Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, and Diwali off. Because I know you all truly do believe in valuing our experiences and can recognize that moving towards the secular calendar is contrary to this belief. Thank you all for your time.
Next is Ahmad Nader.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ahmad Nader. I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to give public comments today. Really appreciate it. I'd like to share two perspectives and end with an offer for the board. My first perspective is as a parent. I've been a parent of District 68 and 128 students for the past nine years. I'm currently the father of Yahya Muhammad, who is a sophomore in Libertyville High School. Yahya is a student who finished freshman as an honor roll student for the two semesters and is currently in the junior varsity soccer team with four wins and one loss so far in their conference. And although it's good to be proud of what our kids do, I'm not saying that to be braggy. I'm saying that to encourage a sense of appreciation in the board members of how important an inclusive and welcoming environment in the school is for students of ethnic and religious minority. As parents who've never been through the high school system in the U.S., we were so anxious about how our kids would actually be welcomed and accommodated in such a school system. And it has been incredibly overwhelming how Libertyville High School has been inclusive to students like him, accommodating the religious and cultural needs from things like accommodating places to pray, thinking about having religious holidays as time off, understanding their needs and their cultures and their backgrounds is a big factor for their success. The second perspective I want to share is a different hat that I'm wearing tonight. I am currently the president of Islamic Foundation North, which is one of the Muslim organizations in Libertyville on Oak Plain Road. Maybe some of you have driven by it. This is an organization that has been there for more than 20 years, currently has more than 600 families as members and more than 2,000 individual members. The size of this community has grown by almost double in the last five to six years. And one of the biggest factors for that is not about the community itself, but is about the general area. One of the things that we are proud of is that this area, we have the right mix of the right religious institutions and the right public school system. We actually talk to people in the community about how this is the right place to be because the students never have to choose between their religious commitments and their success in academic life. Again, thanks to what Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School have been trying to do with those students. So this is a really unique mix, not only for Illinois, but for the U.S., and I do not think anyone here wants to lose that. Now last, I'm gonna end with an offer to the board. And before I mention that, I think this is here either a question of whether or a question of how, whether we want to be inclusive to those students, or is it a question of how do we be inclusive to those students? And I do not expect any of the board members to be asking the question of whether. I'm sure everyone wants to be inclusive to those students, and I encourage everyone not to let the struggles of the how to prevent us from going back to the question of whether. I think the question of whether is... Am I done?
That's three minutes, if you could wrap it up.
Last thing, what I'm offering, as Rania said in the beginning, student, board members, parents, and even myself as a representative of an organization to which most students belong, we're here to help with anything, survey, collecting information, reaching out to other schools in terms of how it can be done, how it can be accommodated. Happy to help with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eva Farencroft.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Eva Farencroft, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak. I don't ever think about the holidays I have off, and it never occurred to me that that might be something that students my age had to concern themselves with. It was when I first connected with one of my Muslim friends that I realized some people have to choose between missing a day of school or celebrating their religion with their family. As a Christian student, I've never experienced this, and I've always had the opportunity to spend my holidays with the people that I care about. I've never had to fight for this privilege, and it shouldn't be a privilege. This should be the standard. I am not the first Christian to speak before the board about this. Emma Black gave a speech four years ago in the class of 2021 was advocating for complete religious tolerance in D-128, specifically recognizing Eid as a religious holiday and a non-attendance day. Unlike Emma Black's speech imploring that you give students their holidays, I am now asking you to fight to keep them. Tonight, on behalf of the student body, I too show complete support for all religious minority holidays to remain recognized as non-attendance days. I was appalled when I learned that my non-Christian peers would lose their holidays next year. How can a school and community who have made such great efforts to create more diversity and equality settle for this outcome? How can you ask students to choose between their religious, their religion, and their education? As a school and community, I recognize that we have made efforts to create more diversity and equality, specifically through the Daring Mission. Even from the perspective of a student who is unaffected by these changes being made to our school, this seems to be a clear step backwards from that mission. Thank you.
Next is Shristi Karwa.
Hi, my name is Shristi Karwa, and I'm a member of the South Asian community of District 128. I'm here to advocate for a day off on Diwali, a widely celebrated holiday in India. This holiday is known for the Festival of Light as it celebrates the time when King Ramam came back to Ayodhya after a long fight with Ravna, a demon. This represents the triumph of good over evil, knowledge over ignorance, and lightness over darkness. As you can see, this is a very important holiday for the religious Indians who compose roughly 11% of our student population here at Vernon Hills High School. South Asian Americans represent about 36% of the state's Asian-American population as well. This will continue to increase as the Indian population in Vernon Hills is increasing. This is only one step closer in making Vernon Hills High School much more inclusive for the Indian community, which is growing at a rapid rate. Although Diwali is a five-day holiday, we are only asking for the main day off. According to the Hindu calendar, we would require one day off for only seven out of the next 10 years. When Diwali does fall on a weekday, it is normally during midterms, which causes academic stress for many students since they could potentially start falling behind on the curriculum or on exams. If we still have to complete assignments during this holiday, it will result in significantly less time being spent with our family, celebrating religion, and connecting with our cultural roots. A way to prevent this is to allow us to take exams at later times and either exempt us or give us an extension to make up for the work we missed in all classes. Thank you for your time, and I will hand the rest of it off to my partner Sahithi. Thank you.
Next is Sahithi Garamella.
Hello, my name is Sahithi Garamella, and I'm a member of the South Asian community of District 128. I'm here today to discuss the lack of diversity with regards to the holidays that are included on the school calendar. Our school calendar focuses mostly on Christian holidays, and there's a lack of representation for other major religions in our community. As seen a few years ago with the proposal to have a holiday for Eid, I believe that it's possible for the district to accommodate holidays from other religions without drastically changing the school calendar so that we can increase diversity and acceptance in our school community. Having a school calendar that mostly focuses on Christian holidays leads to other religions being ignored and the religious and cultural diversity in our school being suppressed. In our specific case, the South Asian community will be unable to participate in the traditions of Diwali due to Christian holidays being favored. Another negative impact is that students will lose touch with their culture. In my personal experience, being surrounded by Western culture and Christianity all the time made me reject my culture in favor of Western traditions. It also made me ashamed of my culture because I felt out of place in a school where my culture was barely focused on or celebrated. Though I've recently started reconnecting with my culture and religion, you still won't see me wearing a kurtar like this on a normal school day. If holidays from other religions are incorporated into the calendar, these issues can be remedied. Students will be able to see more representation of their respective cultures, and our community will be able to embrace diversity. In addition, giving students the opportunity to celebrate these holidays will allow them to take pride in their cultures and reconnect with them by participating in religious and cultural traditions. We believe that a solution for this issue is to have some of the holidays coincide with teacher institute days. Past experience has shown that this is an effective method for giving religious holidays off. A couple of years ago, a group of students from LHS made an appeal to the school board to get the day off for Eid in 2022. Their appeal was successful, and they were able to get the day off since a teacher institute day was scheduled for Eid that year. We're aware that a major priority is to have the school year end by Memorial Day and start during the second week of August, and this method of giving the day off ensured that the schedule for the school year wasn't disrupted. The year was still able to end by Memorial Day on May 26, 2022, to be precise, and the following year was able to start during the second week of August on August 11, 2022. And even if the school year did end later than expected, the school board has the option to start the school year during the first week of August in order to accommodate the extra holidays. The method of setting up institute days on holidays is still being used to give days off even on non-religious holidays, as evidenced by the upcoming teacher institute day on October 9, 2023, which is Indigenous Peoples' Day. Therefore, since this method has been used in the past to give days off without any negative impacts on the schedule, we believe that it can be used more frequently to give religious holidays off in addition to Christian holidays. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Ryan Dinklenberg.
Hi, my name is Ryan Dinklenberg Ramirez, and I, like many other students and community members at this meeting today, am deeply concerned about an allegedly proposed plan by the board to transition the school to an operational calendar, which would effectively eliminate most Jewish, Hindu, and Muslim holidays from the school calendar, hindering many students' abilities to practice their faiths. Also, we can get out of school before Memorial Day. If staying after Memorial Day means our calendar is more equitable and serves the whole student population, we will gladly stay after. Our Jewish and Hindu populations are high, and our Muslim population is fast-growing. By transitioning to this operational calendar, we are telling these students that effectively, they don't matter here. Some could argue that if a holiday has most of the school population not observing, it should be stricken from the calendar. Looking at the school demographics, the only group that makes up a slight majority of the student body is the white population of students. Many of the holidays that would not be represented on this calendar are celebrated by people of color. While it is true that Christians at our school come in all colors, we cannot ignore the racial connotations of this decision and the negative impact it would have on students of color in the district. Not too long ago, a survey was also sent out to students and parents that asked them to provide information as to what religions they practice and what holidays they observe. Given how this information was collected, we don't believe that this survey is representative of the student body because it disproportionately attracts participation from a demographic of non-immigrant parents and a small number of students who care to check the countless surveys in their inboxes. The method of data collection for which future generations will be affected is skewed due to a non-response bias. Generally speaking, immigrant parents in our community will be more likely to work multiple jobs and will therefore have little to no time to dedicate towards keeping in touch with their children's school and will simply trust that the board is looking out for them. Additionally, immigrant parents in our community come from a culture where communication is more direct and responsive. It is also important to note that the immigrant parents in the D-128 community are more likely to have limited English proficiency. For example, the influx of Ukrainian parents in our community will not have had the opportunity to respond with full comprehension due to the language barrier. And their children cannot always be there to translate for them if they are active participants in school and extracurriculars. Armed with this knowledge, I respectfully ask how the administration can expect that this survey is anywhere near representative of a very diverse community. What are you doing to reach those parents who aren't able to get as engaged with the student's school? Several schools close to us, including Nutria, Stevenson, Buffalo Grove, Highland Park, and several more, have Jewish and other religious holidays off for that issue. Operating on what is essentially a Christian calendar as a public school is fundamentally disrespectful to our community and antithetical to our Daring Mission. What is good for most is rarely what is equitable. Thank you.
Next is Kandar Vadia.
I will note an item of correction. Our survey did not ask members of our community to identify themselves, their religious group. It did ask what days their students would not be in attendance for a religious holiday. Just want to clarify that.
Okay, whenever you're ready. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the school board and district administration. My name is Kandar Vadia, and I'm a senior from Vernon Hills High School. Continuing on the comments made by my peers, I wanted to take a few minutes to discuss the multiple fundamental issues proposed by the operational calendar. Four years ago, my family and I moved out of the apartments we used to live in and had to choose what high school we would move into. We were given three options: Stevenson, Mundeline, and Vernon Hills High School. We are a Hindu family who want to preserve our culture while also greatly prioritizing academics. Learning about the Daring Mission of Vernon Hills High School, which does exactly this, greatly balancing amazing academic opportunities along with tolerance and diversity, which is essential in the life of a growing student, made Vernon Hills High School the clear choice. In the past couple of weeks, after talking to a couple of my peers, I was surprised to find that this story was shared by them as well. And something that we had in common was that we loved Vernon Hills because of this Daring Mission. Unfortunately, the proposed operational calendar, which will remove all non-Christian religious holidays that are currently there, including many Jewish holidays, Eid, and any possibility of Diwali, goes against our Daring Mission. Without the school giving these holidays as days off, students of multiple large minorities, including Jewish students, Hindu students, and Muslim students, will be forced into a school which would restrict their ability to practice their own culture. Along with the severe loss of the very diversity which we value at District 128 under our global goal, it also goes against the goals set by our superintendent, Dr. Herman. Instead of working against the superintendent, instead of working, excuse me, towards the superintendent's goals of, quote, "ensuring equitable opportunities for all student populations", implementation of this calendar would compel the many minority students to make the difficult decision between doing schoolwork and celebrating important religious holidays. Additionally, the calendar's removal of non-Christian religious holidays would stop students from building relationships in order to understand others, a key point under our aware goal. If the school doesn't officially recognize the important religious holidays, non-participating students will never be prompted to learn about them and the many important cultures that make our community of D-128 so beautifully diverse. Recognizing that the proposed operational calendar flies directly in the face of our core Daring Mission and the goals outlined by the superintendent, on behalf of the students, I request the board and the administration to continue using the current calendar and therefore continue being daring. Thank you so much.
Next is Nate Reckers.
Hi, my name is Nate Reckers, and I'm a senior here at Vernon Hills High School. I am fortunate to have been a part of a positive school community with fantastic support from teachers, fellow students, and administration. It saddens me to hear that the experiences of some of these individuals may be in jeopardy by a change to the school calendar. During my three years here at this school, the experiences I have shared with my peers have educated me on the incredible diversity we have here in this district. As a Christian-practicing student, I am fortunate and privileged to be in a position where I do not have to choose between my religious freedoms and my education. Some of my peers, ultimately individuals that I consider to be important in my life, would be faced with this tough reality. The elimination of Jewish holidays and other minority holidays within our school from the calendar would be disrespectful and inequitable to the individuals who practice these faiths. The decision to eliminate these holidays would not truly be implementing an operational calendar. However, instead, this will simply be operating our school on a Christian calendar. Ultimately, at this school, our goal is to be a microcosm of our community. We should be reflecting and honoring this community in the process. We want to create an environment that is fair, equitable, and accommodating to all people, regardless of their own personal religious affiliations. We should not be implementing an inequitable community by making these changes to the calendar. School administration has properly expressed a 60-40 rule for the school to properly operate. This is not an equitable system, as this states that whatever is best for most is best for all. However, this simply goes against the very idea of equity. I encourage members of administration to consider how a change in the school calendar may and ultimately will have a large and meaningful impact on the very students and teachers that this community is built upon. Even simply considering to eliminate these days of importance is foundationally wrong, inequitable, and creates harmful effects for students and people within our building. It sends a message that the people in this community are being overlooked, and we do not value each and every member. I hope to see this community continue to make steps in the right direction. Many of my peers here today share a fear that this would be a step backwards, creating a more harmful and less inclusive environment for the minorities in our community. With all that being said, I would like to encourage you all today With all that being said, I would like to encourage you all today to continue advocating for your beliefs and the beliefs of others, as I believe that this is what is the ultimate goal and the only way to create a loving community. In the wise words of Maya Angelou, "Love recognizes no barriers; it jumps hurdles, leaps fences, and penetrates walls to arrive at its destination full of hope." Thank you.
Next is Ananya Kavitekar.
Hello. Hello, my name is Ananya, a senior here at VHS. As a student, I wanted to add that these periods of time off are not a hindrance to those that are non-practicing. We students not only appreciate but look forward to having a few days off here and there. It gives us a day of calm, a day of refreshment, and a day of tending to our mental and emotional well-being. Having these days off helps us live a more balanced life, which aligns with the resilient and healthy aspect of our daring mission. Additionally, as part of a religious minority myself, I wanted to reiterate that this decision goes on to send a disheartening message to many communities that uphold other vibrant faiths and cultures. Removing holidays not celebrated by plurality at the school in essence sends the message that if it is not Christian, it is not of importance to the district. This is the opposite of equity. Simply this consideration, regardless of intention, carries with it an unsettling tinge of intolerance, which does not resonate with the aware and global aspects of our daring mission. This dilemma has been another grievance, adding to a sense of growing distrust in the administration from students and families to provide the policy needed to not only accommodate but support for our diversity. For the reasons presented tonight, my peers, Ryan, Kandarp, Nate, and I, along with others in the audience, believe that the current student calendar, the daring calendar, should be kept inclusive and open-minded. Thank you for your time.
The next is Anara, and I'm not sure what the first couple of letters of your last name are, and I don't want to guess. It says, "Anara Rep of JSU." Anara, what's her last name? I'm sorry.
Katzman.
Katz, that's a K. I could not... That was what I was struggling with. Didn't want to guess. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anara Katzman, and I am a sophomore at Vernon Hills High School and a representative of Vernon Hills JSU. I'm here this evening to speak about the calendar changes that the board is considering. Specifically, I would like to explain how your possible decision to have school on Jewish High Holidays will affect me, other Jewish students, and students of other minority groups within District 128. I'm glad to be able to speak with you this evening, one day after Yom Kippur has ended. Yesterday, I spent time at synagogue and services led by Rabbi Ari Margolis, who is here with us tonight. I also spent 24 hours fasting, which meant that I had nothing to eat or drink for a full day. I did this because Yom Kippur is one of our two holiest days, and we do not eat, drink, or work so that we can devote ourselves to prayer. The High Holidays are a period of 10 days in which God writes the Book of Life for the next year. These days are dedicated to forgiveness and reflection. It is considered our New Year, and Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur are the most important part of our New Year celebrations and prayers. We Jewish students in District 128 were very privileged yesterday. Because there were no school, we felt able to celebrate the holiday with our families and community. We did not miss any instruction, tests, homework, activities, or sport. We were privileged to be supported by this district, our teachers, and our classmates. This has been true for students since the school's opening. The proposal you are considering, not taking off holidays unless 60% of the students and staff would be absent, would take away that feeling of support. When you sent out the survey to find out how many District 128 community members take the various holidays off, you knew the results before a single person answered. Jews are a minority group in the school, community, and our country. Mathematically, minority groups would in fact be represented somewhere below 50%. This tells me that the survey you sent was purely a facade to make it look like you were being responsive to the community. It wasn't about finding how many people it would affect, because anyone could have told you the answer would have been less than 60%. Minority groups will, by definition, never be over 60% of the population. The only group that meets that threshold is white and Christian. So please tell me, as me and my Jewish peers miss two days' worth of instruction, what will take place during those days that is okay for me to miss? Do you believe that there are days in my classes that aren't important? I can tell you that there are not, because our teachers make every day a meaningful and important learning opportunity. To make it unimportant for me to miss a class is a statement about what you believe happens in the classrooms of our schools every day. I know that this district believes in equity and inclusion. In 2022, you made a statement to the community about what you value when you created a position that solely focuses on equity and inclusion. Our district mission statement, Daring, conveys similar messages. The G in Daring stands for Global, which is about valuing diversity and understanding others. And because I am a product of District 128, I have had teachers and coaches who teach to the mission. They have taught me that D stands for Dreamers and Doers, which the district has defined as students believing they can make a difference. I am hopeful that the board will consider what I have said and let me make a difference in how you vote on the calendar proposal. When you vote, please remember your commitment to the values that our district strives to uphold and keep the minority holidays as days off. Thank you.
Next is Aiden Shepherd.
Hello, I am Aiden, and the president of International Club. To eliminate nearly all non-Christian religious holidays is a violation of your mission, daring. This would imply, the G in Daring is to be global and to value diversity and inclusion. This would be violated by requiring non-Christian religious students to take an absence in order to fulfill their beliefs. This would occupy a normal instruction day, which, according to the state of Illinois, missing more than two of these days in a month would result in a decrease in academic performance. This inherently results in a disadvantage against me and my fellow religious minorities. Thank you.
Next is Rabia Khan.
Hi, my name is Rabia Khan, and I'm a parent of two current Libertyville High School students and two future Wildcats. A few years ago, when this board made the decision to make Eid a non-attendance day, I was so proud to be part of this district. I felt like my children and my community were seen and acknowledged as part of this community. I was also extremely grateful to this board that my kids would not have to make the decisions I had to make growing up. Do I go to school so I don't miss a key instruction, or do I celebrate an important holiday with my family? Do I let my team down, or do I let my family down? As a religious minority, these are the questions we struggle with. To say that I am disappointed that the board is going back on their decision would be an understatement. You are sending a message to members of your student body that you don't matter. According to the daring mission statement, G stands for Global. We value diversity. We build relationships in order to understand others. Do we only value diversity when it is convenient for us? When it looks good on the website banner or on the cover of a pamphlet? What relationship are we building when we tell a community that it's just too difficult to accommodate you? Illinois has the largest Muslim population per capita in the United States, and it is only continuing to grow. At Oak Grove School, which is a feeder school in Libertyville High School, we have seen almost 15% students absent on Eid when it was an attendance day. One of the reasons that Oak Grove School was able to make the argument to make Eid a non-attendance day was that District 128 was already doing so. The decision you make not only affects the District 128 calendar, but it affects the feeder districts also, many who look at your calendar as a baseline on creating their own calendars. So I ask you as a board to think about the message that you are sending out, not only to the District 128 community, but the community at large. Thank you.
Next is Justin Rubenstein.
Hello, my name is Justin Rubenstein, and I'm a senior at Vernon Hills High School. I would like to speak to you in objection to the proposed operational school calendar. As a practicing Reform Jew, I use the days off of Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur each year to go to synagogue and spend the holiday with my family. I worry that in the future, these opportunities will not be available for the Jewish students to go to synagogue and will cause people to get behind on homework or give up celebrating the High Holidays altogether. Though I understand there is a delicate balance between which holidays you decide are days off of school, I feel the approach you are using did not gather sufficient data. For example, the calendar only got responses from 16% of families, which does not represent a true sample size, since this survey was only voluntary. My suggestion would be considering new changes to the calendar. You should gather more survey results, lower the threshold for occupational capacity, or come up with some better way, such as each religion having one holiday off. Thank you for your time.
Next is Andy Trobe.
My name is Andy Trobe. I'm a sophomore at Libertyville High School, and I'm here on behalf of the Jewish Culture Club. The Jewish community has endured centuries of persecution around the globe, but in the 1980s, a significant step towards inclusion was taken within the Libertyville and Vernon Hills Jewish communities. During this period, the school board made a vital decision to allow Jewish individuals to observe their most significant holidays by allowing them to have those days off of school. This inclusive policy has not only improved diversity within our towns, but has also made Jewish families in this school district feel genuinely welcomed and valued. As our school district promotes and prioritizes equality, it is necessary to show that to the Jewish community as well. Among these important holidays, Rosh Hashanah stands out as the Jewish New Year, a time when Jewish families come together to reflect on the previous year and prepare for Yom Kippur, known as the Day of Atonement. Yom Kippur is the most sacred day of the year for the Jewish community, and it is a time when Jewish people gather to seek forgiveness for their past year's mistakes, allowing them to move forward with a clean slate. Yesterday, District 128 did not have school because of Yom Kippur. As a result, I could spend the day fasting, reflecting, and praying without the anxiety of my overwhelming schoolwork. If we did not have school off yesterday, I would have had to do schoolwork on a body that was hungry and exhausted and a mind that was focused on developing my faith. None of these are qualities that are helpful in succeeding in my difficult and time-consuming classes. In addition to the students in the community, Jewish staff across the district spend the day reflecting and repenting for their sins. By hosting school on these days, these teachers would have to pick their job or their faith, with both options having large disadvantages. Both of these holidays hold much importance for the Jewish community, and having these days off from school is instrumental in enabling Jewish students and staff to fully engage with their faith rather than juggling academic responsibilities alongside the profound teachings and rituals of these special days. An excused absence would not be the same as having this day off, because then the Jewish students would be required to make the work they missed that day. This sacred time is essential for my family and the rest of the Jewish community within D-128. During these days, we strengthen our sense of community, connecting both with our faith and with one another. The continuation of school days off for these holidays plays a vital role in preserving these necessary traditions. Thank you.
Next is Kim Reiman.
Hello, good evening. My name is Kim Reiman, and I'm here as a parent and an aunt of an LHS student and some Oak Grove nieces I have. And I really want to step back here for a minute. I want to remind everybody, we are here as a representation and reflective of this equality and inclusion that we just keep talking about. So let's talk about it and look around the room. This is why we're here, because it's in your mission statement about, let's be daring and be global. This is the world we live in. It is very global, and it is not aligned to everything that is, you know, what we consider around the Christian faith or a holiday. And so I just want to remind us of this, that we're here today because of that, but I also do understand how difficult it is to balance the calendars and all the requests that come. So as a parent and someone who understands instruction time is critical for all of our students, it's really important to take a step back. The other reason that we're here is for our students, right? We're here, I want to remind you, that we're talking about the community that we serve, our kids. And our kids come in every shape, color, size, and religion. Religious holidays can help us reduce, can help students reduce the feelings of isolation and exclusion, and among students who feel like their beliefs are not being recognized or respected. To be an inclusive district, we need to do the small things that have very big impact. We should do things like, look at the practices and processes that put a school calendar together. Why don't we have conversations? Bring our DEI committees together and look forward, okay? Over the next few years, they're going to change. They don't run on a normal calendar, right? We follow a lunar calendar. A lot of religions do thus. This is not something that's new, but I understand, when you're putting a school calendar together to open the school year, we may not be thinking what holidays are coming and did they move by two weeks, or... There's a lot of moving parts to this. But let's think about how we put that calendar together, and by making an effort to honor these holidays, the school board can send a message that all students are valued, included, regardless of their beliefs and their religious backgrounds. It's crucial for school boards to recognize and honor the diversity of students by acknowledging religious holidays. I know this is not an easy task, but doing so can create a more inclusive, accepting school culture, which is what we're always talking about. Let's welcome everybody and let them all feel comfortable, but then to take things off the calendar doesn't make you feel very, you know, included or engaged. So we have to remember that we have a lot of kids that have feelings and emotions attached to these choices that we're asking them make in high school. We made a decision that this was important four years ago, and now we're pulling it out because we didn't look ahead. And I think that's a really difficult thing for us to swallow right now. So I'm also here to help problem solve or think about ways that we can, you know, tackle these issues, but we have to really realize that by just sending out a thought and idea that we can't meet the academic timelines because we didn't think through a calendar is really a difficult position for all of us to be in. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
Hi there, I'm Ari Margolis. I'm a rabbi of congregation Or Shalom in the area and father of an incoming ninth grader to Vernon Hills High School. I wasn't going to speak tonight, I came to support some of our congregational students who came to speak. But then I spoke with Imam Asfar Uudin of the Islamic Foundation North, who's out of town, and we were going to come together and speak together. Since he's out of town, I'm representing both of us. But I've been a part of school district conversations about holidays on calendars in many different places, in Raleigh, North Carolina, in different districts here in Los Angeles. And one of the biggest trappings that you can fall into in these times is by saying we have legal standards to uphold, and this is just the way it's going to be, it ends up pitting minority groups against one another in the conversation. I want to applaud all of you who came out tonight to speak, all of the students. You spoke incredibly, incredibly well, and you're standing for the opposite of that, standing together to say that this is what we want as a district. I can speak for myself as a parent. We moved to this district because we knew that this would be a place where we would have our religious holidays honored as a day off. Otherwise, we would have looked at another place to have lived. Many Jewish families do the same, and I'm hearing tonight, many Muslim families do the same as well. Making a decision to take these holidays off of the calendar will lead to a different rate of moving into this area, and that's going to get in the way of our daring goals of diversity. There's a Jewish feminist thinker named Blue Greenberg who said, "When there's rabbinic will, there's a halachic way." And halacha is the Jewish word for law. She says, "When law is seemingly against you, if you have the will to make it happen, there's always a way to figure out the law." And there are many districts in our country who figure out the law, how to honor the religious minority holidays in their districts. If we have the will, I'm sure we can do so as well. On behalf of Imam Asfar Uudin and myself, we are both willing to talk with the district and talk about options of coming together, how we can fulfill the legal obligations and to work with the district to honor all student faith backgrounds. That's what we want to do, and we want to be part of the solution, part of the collaboration that exists around this issue. So we thank you all for your service and for your time today, and again, huge, huge, amazing shout-out to all of the students who spoke so beautifully. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board? Would anybody else like to address the board?
Hello, my name is Rain Weiner and I'm a senior at Vernon Hills High School. And I would just like to thank everybody else who spoke and they, I agree with everything that everybody else said here. Not only does the proposed operational calendar affect the lives of students, it also affects the lives of teachers. There are so many teachers here, and having this operational calendar that removes the holidays that many teachers would celebrate discourages the hiring of teachers who are not Christian, because if we have teachers that would be unable to teach in school on more days, then they would be unable to have more school days that the whole school can function on. So I would just like that people think about the teachers and the students with this decision. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Hi, good evening. My name is Bruce Bernstein. I have a senior in Vernon Hills High School and a freshman who just started Vernon Hills High School. When I was growing up, a long time ago, I lived in a community that only had a Christian-based calendar. We were one of two Jewish families that lived in the community. So it was kind of hard to blame the school, and that's how things were. I missed out on team activities. I didn't do as well in certain days of classes because I had to take time off for Rosh Hashanah, for Yom Kippur. When my family and I decided it was time to move back to the United States from China, we looked for a community that was diverse, because we lived in a diverse expat community when we lived in China, but also a community that supported the Jewish religion, Muslim religion, Hindu religion. We didn't want to move to an area that was strictly white Christian. Therefore, we probably would not have moved to Vernon Hills if the operational calendar which you are considering was actually put in place. We hope, our family hopes that, since I do have a freshman, that we kind of continue the way it is and look for other ways of giving the school more learning days, if that is one of the things. Maybe extending the year a week, maybe starting the week, starting a week earlier. Just some other thoughts. Thank you, and we do appreciate the work that all you guys do up there for the community and for the schools.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Hi, my name is Kathy Wolfson. I had no intention of speaking tonight. I came because my nephew, Justin Rubenstein, came here to speak. I am absolutely blown away by all of the families and students that are here today. I think it should be noted that a lot of the students I hear talking are seniors, so they have no personal interest for themselves. I think that's a really good message, and I want to thank you for coming out and speaking for the future of Vernon Hills High School and Libertyville High School. I moved here 20 years ago. I have six kids going through this school. Never in a million years did I think that there would be a possibility that they would have to miss school for a Jewish holiday. I'm excited for all the Muslim families that are here, and I hope that, you know, the Muslim and Hindu families are able to get the holidays that they need, because I think that's what makes this community so wonderful. I love this high school, Vernon Hills. I have kids of all different shapes and sizes and challenges, and every one of them has had such an amazing experience, and that's because it is so accepting. Every teacher here has just given our kids so much. And like someone else said, "You're inclusive," and that's what makes it so special, and I think that would really do harm for our district. So if you need help in any way, not that I have the time, but I will make the time, I would be glad to help figure that out as well, in any way that I can. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Hi, my name is Sophie Iqbal. I'm actually a future Wildcat. I'm in seventh grade. I'd just like to ask, if this is rude or anything, feel free to knock it down, but how many of you guys are Christian or Catholic?
So I think we're not going to do a survey.
Okay. But anyways, if you are, I think that would just say enough.
Did I say my name, address, or notes?
Just your name.
Socrates, I have a junior here. I'd like to basically say thank you for being here. I agree, I'm Catholic. So I did see that survey come out. I really didn't participate in it. Normally, I don't participate in surveys because I feel that not a lot of people participate in them. So one of the questions I have for you is if there's a threshold that needs to be exceeded before you take the recommendations from the survey. As Catholic, I've actually thought that the school district was very lenient towards Jewish holidays, actually. But clearly, I was mistaken. And one thing that makes me really happy to see is that we're not a secular student body, as we can tell from this audience. And so as a practicing Catholic, I have felt that over the years, recent years, that religion has been under attack all across the nation. So by you being here, that helps me continue my faith as well. So thank you so much for being here. So again, what I'd like to end it with is, when you do these surveys, you should set and exceed a certain amount of participation, because if only 16% participate, you really can't go in any direction with that survey. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Hi, my name is Marcy Costas. I have a senior here at Vernon Hills High School. I wasn't planning on participating. I wasn't planning on really talking about this, because obviously, my kid is going to be graduating next year. But what I'm missing and what is lacking from this conversation is, what happens if you do change the calendar? What are you going to do to ensure that all of those students have their ability to take the time off? Do not have tests, do not have homework due on that day, are not penalized for and from the teachers for having a religious holiday off? That's something that you really need to consider. The teachers also need the time off to celebrate their religions as well, without getting penalized, without having a hardship from that. And I think that that's what's lacking from this conversation. Yes, a lot of school districts are changing it so that there's no religious affiliation except Christian affiliation. That's kind of like the way that we're going. But what makes Vernon Hills separate and better than most is that we do recognize all of the students, and you can see from this room that everybody wants to have their religious holiday off. It may not, may or may not be doable, but they need the right to take that day off and not be penalized in any way, shape, or form from the school, from the teachers, from the superintendent on down. So thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Going once? Do we have someone? Yes, please, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Nexus Papantoni, and I am a junior at Vernon Hills High School. Despite having Jewish family members on my mother's side, I have been very disconnected from my Jewish culture. All of my life, I have never really been taught about it, and one of the only times I've ever had access and connection to it is through these holidays that we get off of school. Instead of learning about the Jewish culture that is, despite growing, being dying every day due to the nature of our society, I've been able to learn more about this Jewish culture of mine and my history than I would be able to if I had to sit and learn about how to solve rags. So I feel that it is so important to keep these holidays in order to keep our history, our culture alive, as to not repeat the history. And even if the schedule does go through, I doubt it will be forever. Change isn't easy, but I had no idea this board meeting was even happening, but multiple of my friends spoke out and encouraged me to come today. So even if this does pass through, people will continue to fight, and change hasn't been easy, but I know that it will happen. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board? I see somebody waving all the way in the back, but I don't know if you're raising your hand. Did you want to come forward? Okay, sorry. Didn't mean to single you out, I saw you waved, sorry. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, seeing no other public comments, before we wrap up the public comment section, I want to thank everyone again. This was an exemplary standard to set for civic engagement. So thank you, and we are going to move on to our next agenda item. I'd like to invite our teacher union report. Oh, there. Hi, Monica. I didn't realize you are a representative. So this is Monica Caldecott, our union president.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Monica Caldecott, and I am the librarian here at Vernon Hills High School.
You know, I'm going to ask you to pause just for a second, because we don't want to miss any part of what you're saying, and I think we need to give just a really short break for the people that are not going to stay with us. We do encourage everyone to stay if they can. If you can't completely understand, we'll give you a minute to file out so that we can focus on the teacher union report. So I think that there's some vibes I was catching, or maybe inaccurate misinformation, but I wanted to be really careful about engaging in the conversation. There was just that one little legal matter, maybe somebody said, "People's religion, registration, that's illegal." So I thought like I needed to do that one, but I didn't want to get into any others.
Yep, good. Okay, if you want to go ahead and get started, I just didn't want there to be any difficulty in us being able to hear you.
Thank you, thank you. So again, I'm Monica Caldecott. I am the librarian here at Vernon Hills High School, also president of our D128 Federation of Teachers. I am glad to keep, give our certified teachers a voice tonight. Our union is 308 members strong and covers all three district buildings. This is more than 99% of our potential membership. All of this year's new teachers joined our union. So when you hear from the union about what makes our members happy, or proud, or worried, know that we speak for such a super majority of super teachers. We share information with our members by bulletin boards, in-person meetings, a monthly newsletter, emails, text messages. Our union has building and department representatives to whom our members can go to in person with questions or issues. Our union executive board is leading this great group forward. As president, I meet with Dr. Herman weekly to discuss issues and work on the agenda for our monthly labor management committee, which has four members from the labor side and four members from the management side. Each union building representative also meets weekly with their principals. We work hard to stand up for our union members and to share our perspective on how D128 decisions would impact our working conditions. We want to listen as much as we talk, and we seek cooperation. But when strategies fall short, our collective bargaining agreement, which is in effect until May 2025, has a grievance procedure to guide us past our disagreements. In addition for, in addition to working for District 128, about one-third of our union members also choose to live in the school district. So know that we look to the school board for decision-making that impacts our jobs and also our families. Monday, September 4th, was Labor Day. According to the Illinois Federation of Teachers, this day is a set aside to honor and recognize the American labor movement and the workers of the past who sacrificed to ensure workplaces that are fair and safe for all. The strength of labor unions is in the news recently, with President Biden today joining the United Auto Workers on the picket line. We also have the Hollywood writers' strike and a growing push to unionize retail locations. IFT president Dan Montgomery shared that this week is the 40th anniversary of Illinois laws that granted collective bargaining rights to public employees in Illinois. This and all the days are days to celebrate our union, our collective work, our representation, and our strength together. Our work educates, supports, and lifts up our students and our society. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Caldecott. Next, we have our student school board representative reports. I will turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Rukaya Almanshawi, and I'm representing Libertyville High School tonight. So in tonight's board report, I will be talking about clubs, affinity groups, cafeteria concerns, and student involvement in committees. So let's get right into it. So academic and career clubs have been looking at new ways to learn about the career the club is focused on. So recently, these clubs have been inviting guest speakers to talk about their jobs in the given field. So for example, last week, Psychology Club and MetCats, which are clubs focused on careers and interests in psychology and medicine, invited the Lake County coroner to give a presentation about what her job looks like. And I was actually very lucky to attend that meeting and thought it was a cool way to bring new ideas to the table in these clubs. Now I will talk about affinity groups and what they have been up to during their meetings in the past month. API, Asian Pacific Islander Club, did some cool hands-on activities where they made origami mosaic squares this month. They also collaborated with the Vernon Hills High School Asian Student Association for a family dinner last week. Black Student Union also started off the year strong and are currently planning on, are currently planning to attend the Black Student Workshop that will be held on October 12th. Muslim Student Association had their annual scavenger hunt and also their annual baking meeting last week, where many students worked together to bake batches of cookies. Jewish Culture Club also had a great turnout for their first meeting where they made apples and honey to celebrate Rosh Hashanah. LHS Lasso, Latin American Student Organization, has a schedule for events to celebrate Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month, which started off last week with color poster art and this week with making papal picado. which started off last week with color poster art and this week with making papal picado. Tonight, I also wanted to bring up how students have been feeling concerned about the rising cafeteria prices. The vending machines rarely have anything that costs a dollar, with almost everything being one in a quarter. Freshman Michael Bowman said, "The prices are high, not crazy yet, but I would prefer for them to go down, especially drinks which cost up to $4, like a canned piece of tea. I understand that there's inflation going on, but it's starting to go over my budget. So, I personally think that the cafeteria food variety has significantly improved, but the prices have significantly also jumped over the past year, which I can understand because we did change our catering company. And also, there's, there is inflation. And when I was a freshman, the cookies cost only three-quarters, but now they're $2. So, I will definitely say that, like most seniors, I do like to use my senior privilege to go out for lunch because meals from nearby restaurants cost a bit less than the school cafeteria. So, overall, I hope we can start looking at alternatives to lower cafeteria prices to make food more affordable for students who cannot pack their own lunches. Moving forward, student involvement behind the, in behind-the-scenes committees has been impressive. Many students are looking forward to serving on the principal's advisory board with Dr. K and continue working on projects to help our school in many aspects. And students like me, Molly and Louis are also involved in committees along with staff members to provide students perspectives in the Artificial Intelligence Committee to help create a policy around using AI and the D-128 Calendar Committee, which will soon discuss updates regarding the calendar, which many students are waiting to hear about. I look forward to attending that meeting to share the student perspective on how best we can create a calendar that suits students' needs. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Louis Perry and I first wanted to start out by discussing student council at Libertyville High School. Members of our executive and elective boards have been working tirelessly to plan for the upcoming LHS homecoming season. These include preparing for the theme days for Spirit Week, creating designs to decorate hallways around the school and the floats that will be highlighted at the homecoming parade on October 7. Freshman Merrid Fleming said that she is super excited for freshman council this year. This year, she's most excited about getting to assemble and create our own STUCO float for the parade to bring spirit to not only the school, but to our town. Libertyville brings a special connection to its community as we engage with local businesses through local window painting the Sunday before homecoming, as well as our parade. On another note, one issue that was brought up amongst some of the executive STUCO members was regarding class credit. Executive board members meet during second period each day and for them, it's a class, however, they do not receive a credit. There are hours and hours of work put in both school and after-school that they feel they should receive some sort of elective credit. Senior Jack Gold says that he sacrifices a period of day towards planning a better school for all. He juggles many other classes and activities at the same time and feels a credit would be worth it. It is an ongoing discussion that they hope can be addressed and they look forward to having conversations in the future. I'm also looking forward to discussing the topic with Dr. Albin, looking for potential requirements that STUCO would need in order to reach a credible class. On another note, LHS Music Department had their very, has been very active these first few weeks of school. The staff and faculty concert recital occurred earlier this month with performance from Dr. Brown, the choral instructor, and our very own Mr. Stanley, who played a fantastic rendition of Free Fallen by Tom Petty. The Libertyville Band Program has also been preparing for their first band concert, which performed last Thursday in Butler Lake Auditorium. Senior Eric Vu said the concert was very early on in the year and normally, we have a lot more time to prepare. But overall, excuse me, sorry, but overall, we performed very well. The highest band, The Wind Ensemble, played a song called Dragonfly, which featured various sections of the band in a fast-tempo performance. The Symphonic Winds played Legends of the Galaxy to open their performance Thursday night. Band Board President Anne Senior Cameron Huang said that the fall concert was incredibly exciting this year. It was fun to get into the swing of things after a long summer break. Fortunately enough, Rishi Tippati, a member of our student newspaper Drops of Ink, was able to write a feature on the band's concert and post it to our online news website. The magazine has been covering different sports events such as girls volleyball games and the Friday Night Lights out on our football field, capturing the game highlights through their stories and catching the best plays through photography. They are very excited to be writing more stories using their online platform this semester, highlighting various events in students. News Editor Senior Caroline Scott shares that one new addition in the class this year is the breaking news team, which covers urgent or prominent events impacting LHS students to post on their online website. This idea was sparked last year when students walked out of class in support of anti-gun violence in the schools and in solidarity of victims of such occurrences. Two Drops of Ink's students attended that walkout and within six hours posted a summary for the rest of the student body to read. Their first print magazine of the year at LHS will be distributed the week of homecoming in October. Caroline also mentioned that hours of preparation have gone into our newest issue and each story is centered around the theme Elevate, such as LHS is elevating their campus policies and student activities. As a first-year student staffer myself, I can share the enthusiasm and excitement for our upcoming issue. We have stories ranging from the new bathroom renovations to student perspectives on the hall pass policy. They have been re-jumpstarting their social media usage to keep students in the loop of new stories and what it's like to be in Drops of Ink. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Molly Neary. Starting off, LHS had their native plant sale hosted by the Environmental Sustainability Club, Egos, as well as LEAF and NHS volunteers. The group made over $10,000 reflecting a growing community interest and awareness in helping our local environments. Speaking of green, our interpersonal violence prevention program, Green Dot, had an impactful week, hosting a variety of trainings, freshman informational presentations and a school greenout. One of the trainings hosted was QPR training, which I attended alongside Dr. Herman, that taught how to be a proactive bystander in situations of suicide. This training was also a part of our school's Yellow Ribbon Month, aimed to break the stigma around mental health-centered conversations. Many juniors and seniors gathered during their lunch period to take part in the trainings, receiving certifications for completing the training. The next type of training hosted by our Prevention and Wellness Program is Alcohol Poisoning Response Training, which began today and is set to take place throughout the next two weeks. Freshmen also learned how to be a proactive bystander when they were introduced to Green Dot and its three Ds: direct, delegate and distract. Introducing Green Dot from the start of their freshman year allows for a grade of effectiveness of what the training is meant for, creating a healthy environment for LHS students to feel welcomed and safe. Senior Green Dot trainees, including myself, were also able to attend the freshman sessions, sharing examples of how Green Dot has given us many opportunities for involvement in LHS. Information about these events was pushed out through the Green Dot LHS Instagram account, serving as an example for the new trend at our school, using Instagram to boost participation in school clubs and activities. The Green Dot Instagram account administrator, Hannah Fleming, who also maintains the Class of 2024 Student Council and Life of a Wildcat Instagrams, shared that she believed this marketing tactic is mutually beneficial as it allows for information to spread fast as students repost information on their stories, encourages all students to participate regardless of grade or previous involvement as they see positive posts about their high school community, as well as teaching the owners how to create eye-catching posts that get students excited. This activity is seen in a variety of clubs that also repost colorful infographics to spread news about the club or upcoming meeting dates and events. This trend raises questions over how we can use social media for better communication between school and students, as well as shows how social media might be beneficial for students' involvement. Shameless plug here, we've all used our shared Instagram account, LHS Board Reps, to post information and notices about our participation in these meetings and have seen positive interaction within our school community.
Hi, I'm Maya Ravel. The past few weeks at Vernon Hills High School have been filled with new and exciting opportunities for the students, as well as a time to reflect on numerous terms of importance. VHS is excited to recognize the Class of 2024 National Merit semifinalists. There were 10 individuals that met the state and national qualifications for this prestigious recognition, so a big congratulations to them. The Class of 2024 also had the opportunity to put on their campaign hats and collaborate with their peers for the AP Government Political Ideologies Project. During this project, students randomly chose a political party to represent. Each student would then go on to research the beliefs and ideals of the chosen party. Students would then go on to write a speech campaigning for the 2024 election. It was a fun activity for the students to work with their classmates to understand more about the political world.
Across- Maya, can you predict for us who the 2024, you won?
It was, it was more of like an election of how well we represented our party as opposed to like who, who would win.
So, you're saying it's inappropriate for me to ask your class to predict the results of the next presidential election?
Probably.
Probably. Okay. Please, please continue.
Across District 128, we are sure to prioritize safety for the students and staff. To ensure we are doing so, in the first week of September, we took time during second period to practice all of our safety drills. From fire drills to lockdown drills, the school administration and staff has made it a priority to ensure the staff and students in the building feel the highest level of safety while they are in the buildings. The investment made on the door locking system has not only allowed for more efficient transitions to designated areas for the lockdown, but has also allowed for teachers to feel a sense of security and calmness when directing their students during these drills. We asked our AP Government Teacher, Mr. Boss, what he thought of this new system. He said, "The automatic door locking systems are great. It is a great way to ensure my classroom or other areas are secure when there is a threat. In the past, I need to use my keys to lock my classroom door. If I didn't have those keys, there would be no way to secure the room. This makes it seamless and much safer." Just last week, our Spark Club had a week full of activities and exercises to raise awareness and advocacy for suicide prevention. The student body embraced this important cause and participated by decking out in yellow to support, to show support while engaging in raffles in the school foyer. Having the entire student body able to participate for this very important cause reiterated the feeling of community that many of us feel at Vernon Hills High School.
Thank you, Maya, for those wonderful updates. Jumping straight in, I'd like to dive into what student council is planning for homecoming. Vernon Hills Homecoming will take place on October 7th from 7:30 to 10:30 PM. To create craze around homecoming, each class will be meeting to decorate their chosen hallway this Saturday. The week leading up to homecoming will be filled with hype spirit days surrounding the theme Cody's Carnival. The specific spirit days are United States Fair Day, Pink Out, Night at the Carnival, Color Competition and Cougar Spirit, which have all been voted on and finalized by the student council classes. Having generated all this buzz around homecoming through the Color Competition Rally on Thursday and the Homecoming Pep Assembly on Friday, students will be ready for homecoming on Saturday. Additionally, student council Dr. Beagle and Ms. Nardini are hosting Extreme Flag Football on Monday, October 2nd, in which an epic game of flag football will be played amongst senior females on the football field. New clubs such as Future Aviators Club are in their second year of operation and students seem to be gaining interest. Club leader Orlando Alice says they are continuously making improvements in communicating the need for pilots in our country and are frequently encouraging students to take a peek at careers in the aviation industry by giving presentations on different careers and inviting speakers that work in the industry. According to students in the club, they find it engaging and educational when he brings his personal flight simulator because it allows them to experience what it's like to fly an aircraft without actually having to leave the ground. Lastly, I'd like to talk a little bit about our transition from Future Business Leaders of America to Business Professionals of America, also known as BPA. The new advisor, Dr. Beagle, who was previously an FBLA advisor, expresses how excited she is for this transition because of the growth in communication and organization of BPA in comparison to FBLA. She does, she goes a little bit further in detail and says that BPA works better with the school year as all competitions take place before school ends and allows for more students to participate. Just recently, BP had the first meeting in which previous FBLA president Candar Vadia led a detailed meeting, teaching students about the new organization. They had nearly 60 students attend with many of them following up with questions. Additionally, this club attracts many new faces due to the different competitive events it has to offer and it is in the proximity of, or the proximity of area, state and nationals this year as they all take place in Illinois. Thank you.
The new organization is BL-
BPA.
BPA.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Rohis Vermanyan. VHS also started off by giving seniors a bit of attention as the CRC provided Surviving App Season Presentations for seniors to help them stress less in this stressful time with comfort dogs and cookies. Overall, seniors were very appreciative of this opportunity to de-stress. Additionally, VHS also started celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month last week. Last Tuesday, a question was asked in the intercom and a random class was chosen to answer. Ms. Randall's class was one of the lucky classes that got churros for answering questions right. Students look forward to being able to win churros and learn more about Hispanic culture in the coming weeks. In addition to student activities, VHS also had many important events happening outside of school hours. Girls volleyball player Maya Ravel broke the record of 1,108 assists, an 18-year-old school record in a match with the Maine East.
Congratulations.
Keeping with our daring mission, VHS also hosted Asian Pacific Islander Night on September 20th, where parents and students were able to come together, eat some traditional food and find community in VHS. Lastly, VHS Orchestra had their first concert on September 21st, kicking off fine art events with a bang. The Symphony Orchestra's performance featured Saul Luis Rodrigo Batista, Noah Kim and Kaylee Kim. Overall, VHS students are getting into their groove with the end of Progress Period 1 and ready to start the month of October great.
Excellent job. Thank you, student board reps. Moving on to foyer requests.
Yes, in the board report, we received three additional foyer requests and they were available for the public in the board's review. And then next, I have our good news report. And I'm going to build off of one of the announcements our students made and share the names of the D-128 seniors who were named National Merit semifinalists. Charles Collier, Amir Abdulev, Sarthak Argawal, Christian Choi, Sahithi Garamela, Divya Mudamendi, Noah Kim, Karen Kai, Tyler Park, Rain Weiner, Cameron Huang, Vanessa Zhang and Kyle Lee. So, congratulations to the students and their families. It's a very big honor. The nationwide pool of semifinalists represents less than 1% of US high school seniors, including the highest-scoring entrance in each state. Semifinalists will compete to become finalists and have the opportunity to earn one of the more than 7,000 National Merit Scholarships worth nearly $28 million that will be offered next spring. We have another group to recognize. Congratulations to the D-128 seniors named by College Board National Recognition Program honorees. We had several students included in that award, including Sean Kalu, Sophie Cottle, Ryan Dinklenberg Ramirez, Michaela Marquez, Cole Mitchell, Abraham Quinones, Rihanna Bellerbells and Michael Jean. The National Recognition Program celebrates 7,200 high school seniors from across the country who have met the following criteria: 3.5 or higher GPA, PSAT scores within the top 10% of test takers in each state and attend either a rural area or are identified as a student of color. Next, student to be recognized is Senior Bridget Graham and she was named this year's recipient of the Daughters of the American Revolution Good Citizens Award. Next, D-128 Special Olympic athlete Noah Hewitt and athletic partner Luke Angelos attended the Youth Activation Committee, or YAC, bootcamp in Wisconsin as representatives for D-128. The YAC worked with Special Olympics Illinois staff on their Unified Champion School initiatives to promote inclusive schools and communities across Illinois. LHS junior Annie Brody was selected to participate in the Ohio State University Honors Jazz Band on guitar. Students participating will experience an opportunity to work with the Ohio State University Jazz faculty in rehearsal and master classes. And finally, D-128 was recognized for its exceptional communication efforts by the state's School Public Relations Association, or INSPIRA. D-128 Communications Director Mary Toderick received an Award of Excellence in the Special Purposes Publication Campaign category for our D-128 Strategic Plan booklet. And that completes our good news report for this month.
Okay, moving right along for the consent vote agenda. Before I ask for a motion, I just want to remind everyone that this includes items that are routinely approved by the board with a single motion, minutes, destruction of closed session recordings, educational tour requests, employment matters, disposable of obsolete capital equipment, bills payable, financial reports. These items have gone through extensive board committee review and recommendation. and all of the documentation concerning these items is in the packet for transparency. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda it has presented? Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
And the consent vote agenda passes, and we will move on to items for action. We have some employment of employees. Looks like we have in the personnel report, it's... Sorry.
Again, these items came in after our last PNP committee meeting.
So is it just one additional or is it what's listed in the personnel report?
So it's listed in the personnel report, but there's only the one hire and that's why there's the one resume on there.
Understood. Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the employment of employees that occurred after the PNP committee meeting.
Benjamin, I move to approve the employment of employees that occurred after the PNP committee meeting.
Thank you.
Colcarney, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Motion passes? Moving on to item 4B, Board Governance Handbook update. This is for the board to approve the amended language in the Board Governance Handbook that is posted on our website. On page 17 of the handbook, under Collective Bargaining, which is updated to reflect the addition of our new ESP Union. I don't think there's any further information that we require. Is there a motion to approve the amended language in the Board Governance Handbook?
Drumkey, move to approve the amended language in the Board Governance Handbook.
Thank you. Second.
Colcarney, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to the 2023-24 Vernon Hills High School graduation contract.
Before you is the same contract that was presented at the FNF Committee Meeting a couple of weeks ago, which is a contract with Rosemont Theater for the graduation for this school year. The total amount is $43,000. Not sure what else to add at that point.
Anything you want to add, Dr. G?
Yeah, thank you. I updated you last month and excited to bring this contract before you. The Stakeholder Committee is fully supportive of this and excited for our class of 2024 to be in a big venue where many family members can join them in this significant celebration.
Great. Thank you for your efforts on this. Can I please have a motion to approve the contract with the Rosemont Theater for $43,000 for the 2024 Vernon Hills High School commencement?
Carmichael, so moved.
Thank you.
Benjamin, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Congratulations.
Moving on to section five, items for discussion, the D-128 Racial Equity Diversity and Inclusion Policy Report. I will invite Mr. Barn to the podium.
Good evening. I am excited this evening to share with you updates on some of our policies, the commitments within those policies for our racial diversity, equity, and inclusion policy. I'm joined this evening by our campus Equity Coordinators Tara Young at Vernon Hills High School and our newest addition to the team, Matt Carnstead at Libertyville High School. The District 128 Racial Diversity Equity and Inclusion Policy consists of 11 commitments that the board has decided were so important that we needed to have a policy to make sure that we were always pressing forward and making progress in these areas. This evening, I will be presenting specifically looking at commitment number one, identity-affirming environments, number two, diverse staffing, and number three, student success. As we move forward throughout the year, the other commitments will be shared out with you with our metrics and how we're making progress towards those. Beginning with our first commitment, identity-affirming environments, our policy states that we want to ensure that District 128 schools are identity-affirming environments where all students, their families, and the community feel safe, welcomed, and valued. We have talked about some data around this particular commitment before, but new information that we'll be sharing tonight comes from our Five Essentials Survey, which reports our ratings in five categories ranging from very strong to very weak. And we get that rating based on a score range from the average of our responses. Students, teachers, and families are encouraged to take the Five Essentials Survey. As we consider identity-affirming environments, part of that is making sure that we have psychological safety. And through psychological safety, we can determine that at both schools, the Five Essentials Survey rates both Libertyville and Vernon Hills in the very strong category for that. It asks questions around these areas, asking if I feel safe with my teachers, my teachers treat me with respect, I feel comfortable with my teachers at this school, my teachers always listen to student ideas, and students treat each other with respect, work well together, and help each other learn. These questions relate to this area of psychological safety, and we really want to recognize our faculty and staff at both Libertyville, Vernon Hills, and our Transition Centers who are doing an amazing job of making sure that our students feel connected, feel valued, and seen. So congratulations on that end. Some data that we have looked at before, but we want to make sure that we connect it across all of our data points is looking at our SEL survey results from last year. In our SEL survey, we asked about supportive relationships. This again supports our identity-affirming environment, and at both Vernon Hills and at Libertyville High School, we had over 90% of our students reporting favorable results there. So we do believe that this data around psychological safety of our students is reliable as we continue to see similar results across multiple measures. As it relates specifically to our racial diversity, equity, and inclusion policy, it is important to note that even across our various subgroups of ethnicity and race that our students report, again, a strong feeling of psychological safety and supportive relationships. And the third piece of data to look at is our Equity Survey. And when we asked our students about adult fairness, we saw about 84% responding favorably. So across multiple measures, our students are reporting that they feel safe. And as we look at our breakout by demographic here, we see across our subgroups similar results except for our Black population. Our Black population of students do report at a lesser rate, feeling a sense of adult fairness. The Five Essentials also looks at physical safety. As it relates to physical safety, we do see a shift in how our students responded there. And we see that at LHS and at VHS, students reported a feeling of neutral responses as related to school safety. The questions asked around school safety are about feeling safe outside and around the school, safe between home and the school, safe in the hallways, and safety in the bathrooms of the schools. These questions are what led to our results of neutral. When we look at the Culture and Climate Survey from last year, and we consider school safety, if we apply the same score range to the results that we received at last year's survey, it would be favorable. So over the course of last year, we did see some decline in our students reporting the sense of physical safety in our buildings. And so some actions that we're going to take in order to address this. Part of it is ensuring that we have adequate supervision and that that supervision is targeted to specific areas. Assigning staff to supervise bathroom and hallway areas during peak times, such as between classes or during lunch breaks. The presence of adults can deter inappropriate behavior in these spaces and provide assistance in cases of emergencies. At both schools, teachers are assigned supervision periods where they are placed in these areas. Additionally, we are expanding our anti-bullying program through the implementation of Green Dot. At Libertyville High School, a new cohort of teachers and staff have just been trained to provide Green Dot anti-bullying training, and it is being explored as an option at Vernon Hills High School, where staff also participated in that training in order to provide Green Dot. Green Dot's anti-bullying program will increase awareness and create a campaign with an emphasis that includes ensuring that students feel safe and supported in areas such as the bathrooms and hallways, and encourage students to report any incidents or concerns, and also intervene when they witness bullying through specific tools and strategies provided by Green Dot. We will make sure that our gender-inclusive facilities are clearly identified. We do have gender-inclusive and single occupancy bathrooms at both campuses. We want to make sure that those spaces are clearly identified for any student seeking to use those facilities. We also want to address awareness and reporting and encouraging students and staff to report any safety concerns or incidents promptly and establish a clear reporting process and ensure that reports are taken seriously and addressed properly. By continuing to use the QR codes prominently displayed throughout Libertyville and Vernon Hills High Schools, students can use those QR codes to report any instance of bullying or harassment, and those submissions go to Brian Kelly and our LSTs. And then finally, student input involving students in our discussions about safety and improvements. They have valuable insights and suggestions for enhancing the overall safety and comfort of these spaces. Moving on to our next commitment, it's commitment two, which is around diverse staffing. Recruiting, hiring, and retaining practices that embrace a diverse staffing of all personnel at every level that reflects the global community and staff who carry out the district's commitment to equity, inclusion, and diversity. In 2023, 2024, we are looking at our local demographics for the Lake County. Lake County was identified during the process of creating the policy as the space where we wish to align our staff to. In our commitment, we mentioned that we want to make sure that it is a reflection of the global community. In order to reach that, we will begin by aligning more so with our Lake County population. So across each row, you'll see for Lake County what the demographics are according to the 2020 census data. You will notice that it does not add up to 100% because the Hispanic or Latino population and the way that the census collects that data, they separate ethnicity from race, so they ask, is your ethnicity Hispanic or Latino? You have to select yes or no, and then it also asks you to select a race. So those numbers won't add up to 100. It is also important to point out that the census captures data from all people of all ages. So it includes children as well as our elderly population. When we consider that in relationship to our workforce, there are some individuals who are not eligible for work based on their age. We want to align that to our district student population. Our student population is the second column there by ethnicity and race. And then the third column shows us where we are in terms of our district staff. So you'll see, one area of improvement for us is to make sure that our alignment for our Asian staff is more aligned, not only with the Lake County population, but we also want to make sure that we are attentive to bringing more staff of the Asian culture into work for us so that it can be a stronger reflection of the students that we have. Secondly, is our Hispanic or Latino population and making sure that we put emphasis on our recruitment efforts to bring in more Hispanic and Latino staff members into D-128. I'll come back to that fourth column later in the presentation. So who's applying? As we consider the demographics of our applicants, we hired 18 certified positions this year. There were 293 applications in total. Here's a breakdown of how the applicants that we received for these positions compares to the Lake County demographics. Again, we selected Lake County because that is the benchmark where we are aligning ourselves to. So you can see in blue represents the percent of applicants that we had representing that particular demographic, and the orange line is the Lake County demographic for that percent. Reporting your demographic in our hiring process is optional, so we do have the no-response option there. Our process for hiring goes through several steps. What I want to do now is walk you through each step of the hiring process and show you how those 293 applicants filtered throughout our selection process. First is all qualified applicants. Here is our breakdown by ethnicity or race for each ethnicity or race for the total number of qualified candidates that we had applicants for, applications for. Once we review each application, those candidates are forwarded to a video review. Through the video review, it is a recorded interview where applicants answer questions and the hiring manager or the department chair reviews those videos. From those video selections, the hiring manager forwards or promotes applicants to our next phone screener section. The phone screener then is a conversation, a live conversation with the candidate and the hiring manager or department chair. And then any applicant moving forward then comes to committee interviews. The committee interview is made up of a committee of individuals from that department where the candidate comes in for a live interview. In some cases, that may be a Zoom interview, but in most cases, they come in for a live interview in person. And then those candidates are forwarded there. After the committee interviews the candidates, the applicants, they will then make a recommendation for the applicant to move on to the final interview, and this is the last stage of the interview process, and that is, again, an in-person interview. And then finally, somebody is hired for the job. And so over the course of these five stages, you can see where applicants fall in terms of moving forward or being advanced to the next round. And in this year, of the hires that we made for our certified positions, 78% of those hires were white and 22% of those hires were Latino. And so retention, as we look at our commitment, one of the things that we want to make sure is that we are retaining the staff that we bring in. This is an overall look at all staff, including our non-certified staff members. So in 2022, last year, that first column, you'll see by ethnicity or race what our total number of staff members were. That second column will tell us what number of that group left in 2023, how many we hired in 2023, 2024 for this particular school year, and then what that current number is. And the last column tells us the change. It's important to note here that we are making progress in our goals of increasing diversity in all areas with the exception of Black hires. Our Hispanic numbers, we have added seven more Hispanic staff members this year than what we had last year, so we're making progress towards that percentage that we looked at earlier, as well as we added to our Asian. This particular slide becomes important for us because as we continue to move forward in our hiring process, we want to make sure that we are maintaining where we are with diversity. diversity and growing. So we are, we did see some regression in our Black or African-American staff population. So another priority for us is to make sure that as we move forward, targeting specific groups, that our Black and African-American group is added to the Asian and Hispanic groups that we're looking to continue to, to grow.
Mr. Varne, can you remind the audience who was included in the group that left?
Oh, yes. And the group, when we say, we talk about the number of staff who left, that includes retirements, that includes resignations, that includes non-renewals. We had no RIFs last year, but, so anybody who left for any reason. And so as we monitor, I anticipate it, retirements coming up, that's important because we know, we have an idea of who will be leaving, who we anticipate to leave. So with those changes, now we've, you see in the fourth column what our new percentages are for each demographic. So you'll see the slight shift downward in Black African-American staff, but an upward shift in our Hispanic or Latino staff. My actions, what are we going to do to continue to recruit and retain staff of color? Our actions include developing more inclusive hiring practices by examining and revising our hiring practices to ensure that they are equitable and free from bias, using diverse hiring panels to include educators from various backgrounds in the hiring process. And we're working with our hiring managers, our department chairs, our administrators to conduct non-biased training through the process, so that as we're moving, advancing candidates from one stage to another, that we are eliminating any, that we are eliminating any bias that may exist there. We are considering looking at blind resume reviews to minimize unconscious bias and advancing applicants of color to the phone screening round as well. We're creating partnerships with diverse communities by building relationships with our local colleges and universities, especially those with diverse student populations, to establish pipelines for recruiting future teachers, and we're collaborating with community organizations and networks that serve underrepresented communities to identify potential teaching candidates. We're connecting new teachers to our community. We're looking at providing relocation support and assistance in helping new staff members coming to our district secure housing and to move into the district by connecting them with new, by connecting our new teachers and, with our new teachers with families in the area, making sure that we are making it hospitable and connecting them with the right individuals to support them in their transition to our district. We're looking at mentoring and networking programs, continuing our mentorship programs that pair new teachers of color with experienced educators who can provide guidance and support, and continue to host affinity groups or networking opportunities for teachers of color to connect, share experiences, and access resources. And we are continuing those targeted recruitment efforts for the groups that we've identified by attending job fairs and recruitment events specifically aimed at candidates from underrepresented backgrounds. We're advertising our job openings and publications and our websites catered to diverse communities, and we've just added most recently a job posting directed specifically to historically Black colleges and universities. And finally, our grassroots recruiting, one of our biggest assets are the staff that we already have, and by tapping into the networks of our current employees to promote employment opportunities to diverse candidates in their professional circuit, we believe that our friends would more than likely be willing to join us at District 128 because they have heard about the wonderful experiences that we are having here. And the third and final update for this evening is our commitment number three, student success. Honoring and building the strengths and assets of every student, promoting academic, social-emotional growth, and providing multiple pathways to success. This includes monitoring and assessing the impact of educational programs on the achievement of all students. We have spent a significant amount of time last year evaluating the program for striving learners and the remedial sections that we had in District 128 and the work that we were doing to address that group. Tonight, we're going to focus more on the advanced placement side and give you some data around our more rigorous course, our most rigorous courses that we offer in the district. So here, we'll first look at our overall enrollment by demographic and compare that to the enrollment in a, at least one AP class. So for example, if you look at the first column there, our Asian group, the blue bar represents the percent of overall population that this demographic makes up of our overall student body, and the orange bar represents the percent that that demographic makes up of the advanced placement enrollment course. So you'll see that while our Asian students make up 15% of our overall population, they make up 27% of students taking AP classes. And so you'll see that same, similar data across there. One of the things that we have already talked about and, and are working towards is making sure that we have more representation of our African-American and Hispanic and Latino students in our AP classes. Our partnership with Equal Opportunity Schools is going to support us in identifying students who have AP potential and invite them to participate in our AP courses. Now, we're going to look at the percent of the demographic enrolled in AP. So for each demographic in blue, that represents the percent of that subgroup who, that is enrolled in at least one AP class. The orange represents the percent of that subgroup not enrolled in any AP class. So you'll see, again, starting with our Asian group, 74, 74% of our Asian students take at least one AP class, while 26% take no AP classes. We have almost the invert of that for our Black and African-American student population and our Hispanic Latino student population. So again, really drawing our attention towards how do we get more representation from our Black and Brown students in our most rigorous AP courses? Then, of those students who took an AP class, they are afforded an opportunity to earn AP credit, which was transferred to college. That is earned by passing the AP exam, earning a score of three, four, or five. So of the students enrolled in an AP class who took an AP exam, this chart represents the percent of students who earned that three, four, or five in at least one or more AP courses. And so you'll see, looking at that bar, that bar there, across the board of our students taking AP classes, enrolled in AP classes, by and large, the majority of them are successful. We do see that there's a disparity in our Black and African-American students being successful. So we want to make sure that not only do we have more of our students enrolling in AP classes, but there we, we are supporting them to be successful, and we see that there are some targeted things that we need to do in order to better support our Black and African-American students enrolled in those courses. And just so that we are aware as we talk about the level of diversity in our AP classes, here are the top three most diverse AP courses at Libertyville High School and the top three most diverse AP courses at Vernon Hills High Schools. So here's some of the things that we plan to do in order to address our AP enrollment and AP success. We would offer a diverse range of AP courses. We know that there are some AP courses that are designed to have greater access for students of all races and ethnicities. We are very proud that we were selected as one of 500 schools across the nation to pilot the AP African-American Studies class at Vernon Hills High School, which allows our students to have a broader range of AP courses. We want to make sure that our AP courses cover a range of various subjects so that students can take AP courses that are aligned to their interests. We're also targeting outreach and recruitment. We're conducting outreach programs in underrepresented communities to educate students and their families about the availability and the benefits of AP courses, making sure that our students and their parents or guardians are aware of what AP is and how it could benefit them and save them money if they earn the college credit. Those are courses that they do not have to pay for when they go to college. And we're also identifying and recruiting potential AP students through personalized invitations, recommendations from teachers, or discussions with our counselors. This is very much aligned with the work that Equal Opportunity Schools will be providing for us to, to train us on effective outreach techniques and recruitment methods to reach our Black and Brown populations. We're also providing professional development for our teachers, providing professional development opportunities to enhance their ability to teach diverse student populations effectively. This training will include strategies for culturally responsive teaching and differentiating instruction so that our most rigorous courses are more accessible for all students who are enrolled in there, and we are able to see success and support for all students. Also, through our mentorship program, we would like to establish mentorship programs where our current AP students, particularly those from underrepresented backgrounds who are enrolled in AP classes, can mentor and support students who are considering enrolling in AP and be an encouragement for those who are on the, on the fence about taking an AP class. And we also want to recognize and celebrate the achievements of our underrepresented students who excel in AP courses, as this can inspire others to follow suit. And then finally, through our counseling training, we want to ensure that we train our counselors to provide guidance and support for students interested in AP courses, ensuring that our counselors are proactive in encouraging student participation as our students go through course selection, that they are being encouraged to take AP courses and inspired to do, to do well in them. That concludes the presentation part of the evening. At this time, I will take any questions that the board may have.
Sure, I have a quick question. A lot of slides are talking about AP, and I recall our conversation with the EOS folks. There was some comments at that point in time about dual credit as well, and while all this AP stuff is, is good and valuable and, and helpful to get rigorous educational opportunities for our, our students as well as college credit, dual credit does a similar thing. So will we be seeing similar plans, similar thoughts, some, some similar information coming on participation in, in those types of courses? I know we're earlier in that process, but there seems to be a trend in many districts moving to include dual credit as well as AP for various reasons, but I'm just curious to hear your thoughts on that.
Yes. The dual, the dual credit option is another option that allows students to transfer credits from high school to college, depending on their performance in those courses. As we, as we prepare to make our dual credit offerings more robust as a district, we will collect that data and present it as well alongside our AP, as both options equally provide the same outcome of students being able to take college-level courses and transfer that credit to, to their respective colleges and universities.
We do have some of that data now though, right? We do have dual credit classes or science of dual credit class that we offer. So could we just include that as like college-level experience instead of just calling it AP and then put all of that data into one category?
You'd have to, I think that's an interesting question. I do think we have to look at the policy to see how it defines the metrics. We could certainly update the policy to include those metrics, but I'm wondering your thoughts on that, Mr. Varne.
I think that in terms of reporting the dual credit and the advanced placement options, we certainly can do that. Yeah, we can do that. Both are viable options for our students, students to take. I don't, I don't think one is, is more valuable than the other. They're both equally, equally weighted in terms of, of that.
Mr. Varne, I, I do have a question. This seemed to be like a snapshot based on the Five Essentials and the Culture Climate Survey from last year. Sorry, I know, I'm horrible. I know we have been keeping data similarly longitudinally, and I guess what I'm looking for is what are you noticing as our trends? Are our trends improving? And that's what I'm not seeing here. It seems like it's one snapshot, this is what it was last year, but now that we have been focusing on this as a strategy, where are our trends? Are you noticing gaps closing or gaps widening?
Largely, last year was a baseline data year for us with the inclusion of Charlotte Director of Data and Assessment. Largely, our efforts were around collecting that first year's data. So moving forward, as we continue this discussion and looking at this longitudinal data across time, we'll be able to track and, and see from year to year how we are comparing as we, as we go forward.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a more tactical question. As we are encouraging students to take more AP classes, are we also providing them with coaching or help in the school system? Because not everyone is able to afford tutors, and some AP classes are difficult and may not support, you know, their home environment for whatever reason.
Yeah. A couple of things that we are looking at is how we are organizing our summer program, and for students who have never taken an AP course before, we know that it can be intimidating. It can be a shift from what they were accustomed to, particularly if they may be coming, if they're making diagonal movement from a lower level like college prep into AP courses for the first time. And so doing some bridge work during the summer to allow them to be exposed to what they're going to see in, in the, in the AP course. Additionally, it's really important that we make sure that our teachers are armed with differentiating strategies in order to be able to reach the various needs of students coming in, so that as new students come into our advanced placement courses, our teachers feel confident and they have the capacity in order to reach those students where, wherever they are as they're coming into, into that class. So that professional learning is going to be critical, a critical piece for making sure that we are ensuring the success for students coming into AP classes, particularly students who are first-time AP students.
I'm curious, one last thing. You mentioned expanding the Green Dot program. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Currently, Green Dot is only at Libertyville High School. And about two weeks ago, about two weeks ago, the Vernon Hills staff also came together for a training on Green Dot and looking at how we could incorporate that model into the Vernon Hills High School. So determining whether they also want to be a partner with Green Dot and make Vernon Hills a Green Dot school like Libertyville is.
Okay. Do you have any sense of the timeline of when that decision would be made and how, how long it would take to implement?
So the decision, the timeline for the decision, what we've talked about at our place, first of all, we have VH Give, which implements some of these same themes around respect and focuses on the way we treat students. So we would probably be phasing that out and moving into Green Dot. That is something that with kind of the, an early implementation with staff right now, we'd be able to turn around and implement pretty quickly. The one thing that we are kind of, I don't know if I want to say waiting, but, but intently watching is the work being done with a flexible use of time to see exactly how it might work with some calendar or some, some scheduling changes if they're, if they are coming. That's still a big if, but that would give us more time to be able to implement if something like that happened. If not, then we'd have to figure out how to, how to implement, implement something like that in our current structure.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a quick question regarding the retention of staff of color. When we see the changes and we have, you know, negative change or minus changes happening within certain populations, when these individuals leave, and I know they leave for all different types of reasons, are we conducting any type of, or gathering any type of qualitative data on that or conducting any type of exit interview? Maybe someone could speak to that. Maybe someone could speak to that.
That we've incorporated Qualtrics into, you know, our program. They are receiving an exit interview, and then we'll start compiling that data. And then we also do some follow-up on the exit interviews.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the 2023 Summer School Summary.
Hello, I know it's a little late, but we're excited to present our summer school program for this past summer. So summer school, we ran two semesters. The first semester ran from June 5th through June 29th, and the second semester ran from July 5th through July 27th, from 8:15 to 12:45, Monday through Thursday. This year, we offered we offered virtual platform courses as well as in-person courses. So we had 14 courses that were offered in person. You see those listed on this slide. And then we also offered seven courses that were offered virtually. And these are the courses that we were not able to staff. So for instance, in chemistry, we're able to find a teacher for one semester, but not both semesters, and that was an ideal. So then we offered that course virtually. And then the other courses, we were not able to find staffing or someone to provide that course in person. So we partnered with. Sorry, I was going to take her slide.
Good evening, everyone. So this year, we were excited to partner with Imagine Learning for our online course platform. And we offered two types of classes. The first class were were our Courseware classes, which were our self-paced platforms and our modules with staffing for our summer session. We initially had one person to cover our credit recovery classes. However, within the first two days, due to a significant increase in enrollment that we did not expect, as well as addressing the needs of students, we ended up soliciting more assistance from our math teachers to provide support to the students in that class so that way that they can be successful on the platform. We also offered what we call instructional services as well, too, which were our online classes that had a non-D128 Illinois certified teachers to provide support to students who were participating in that class. And that class was for any student who obtained initial credit as well as repeat and replace for our chemistry classes this year. So in regards to our enrollment data, here you see that this is our enrollment data for by building as well as by programs and services. As you can see, most of our students were enrolled in our in-person courses. However, as I stated in the slide previously, we did have an increase of students who were taking event, who took advantage of our online platform. Here on here on this slide, we showed our three-year trend data. This is by enrollment by course. So these numbers are representative of students who took multiple courses in which they were counted twice. So as you see, there was a significant decrease between summer '22 and our current summer. However, it was an increase from 2021.
I'm going to walk us through the demographics of the enrollment. So this is new this year. It's the first year that you'll see the enrollment of summer school broken down by demographics. So the first slide will cover the gender demographics. And this goes through our in-person as well as our instructional services and our Courseware, which were the the courses that were offered through the online platform. And then followed by students who had an IP status of students. And then we also looked at students who were receiving a fee, who receive a fee waiver. And then lastly, we have it broken down by race. So if you take a look at this, you'll be able to understand who are the students that are taking advantage of our programming and and which students are falling more into the credit recovery, credit recovery program as well as taking advantage of summer school for to earn initial credit or repeat and replace. And I'm going to hand it back to Dr. Ellis Bowen.
So next, we're going to look at the type of credit earned. And as you see, again, we had a large number of students who attended summer school to earn an initial credit. While we did have some students who attended to complete credit for credit recovery and repeat and replace. So there is an assumption that our students tend to do well during the school year, which results in rich result in not a significant enrollment and credit recovery, repeat and replace, but they do take advantage of the initial credit. Again, this is our data by grades for Semester One, Semester Two. Again, overall, our students did extremely well. And our grade distribution shows that most of our students earned an A during Semester One, Semester Two, and all all the different levels or programs and services that were offered. And we did not have any student who did not, who received an F or not passing courses. Next, as part of our summer programming, we also offered our Student Success Academies as well as a variety of programming for our students with special needs. All right, so during Semester One only, we offer two programs. We offer our Incoming Student Success Academy, which is designed for identified incoming freshmen with activities and instructions that assist with them acclimating into the high school setting. Students focus on areas such as executive function, which is time management, organization, along with math and ELA. This program is for both general education students as well as special education students. And our special education students who participate in this program are recommended by their IP team during their annual review. Our next program that is also offered during this time is our Student Success Academy Plus, which is a program that is designed for upperclassmen, students with special services. Again, they look at both those executive functioning, our learning, our ELA and our math courses, as well as strategies that have been identified in their individual education plans. Students who participate in either program, whether they be general education or sped, earn a .25 credit and a grade of P or NG earned, which has no pack, no impact on their GPA. In addition to our summer academies for our students with special needs, and as part of our extended school year, we offer our Educational Life Skills Academy in which programming provides students with academic, social, functioning, adaptive skills, along with vocational and community-based experiences. Within our Transition Pathways Academy, students continue, we continue to provide instruction, support, and services that are allowing aligned to the students' extended school year goals. Areas of focus are post-secondary transition, individual living skills, social skills, all within a community-based setting. We were excited for our students in the Transition Pathways Academy to participate in the rep, to participate in their vocational job site at Repower, which is located in Buffalo Grove. Both of these programs are aligned to the Special Recreation Association of Central Lake County so that students can attend our programming in the morning and participate in recreation and leisure activities in the afternoon. In addition to these programs, we also do offer related services, ESY-related services for speech and language, social work, as well as OT. So for our enrollment data for our Student Success Academy enrollment, as we have increased our student recommendations for co-taught settings, our enrollment and recommendations for placement in our more supportive special education instructional classes has decreased, which has resulted also in a decrease in our students recommended for both of our Student Success Academy programs for our special education students. Also, too, there may be some residual effects from the pandemic with our students accessing these programs as well, too. During, for a student with special needs during their annual IEP process, a student's IEP team recommends that student for any for eligibility for both of these programs. And then if the academy models were not offered to students, then we would return to a different model in which it would be provided with homebound services. Again, this shows a number of students that were invited to participate in the program and a number of students and the number of students who actually attended. As stated on the previous slide, due to our increase of our students with special services participating in co-talk classes, which is absolutely amazing, the effect of that is that we have a decline in or decrease in students who are in need of more supportive services, therefore may not be in need of supportive services during the summer. Also, students who did not earn credit for a course did not meet the attendance requirement of 13 days or more of attendance.
Going to keep you guys guessing and include one more person on this presentation. So Dan is going to join us.
Want to click this slide? So wanted to put together some financial information on summer school. Summer school is a little tricky because our fiscal year ends June 30th, with which is right in the middle of summer school. So we have to, so no one fiscal year can encapsulate a whole summer school. So we have to look across two fiscal years. For summer school 2023, that actually includes fiscal year 23 and the current fiscal year 24. And really, what we do is based on in the expenditures and the revenues. We run a really a date range between March. We can have start, we can start receiving revenues as early as March. And we have expenditures for summer school through this month that occurs. And so when we're looking at all that information and pulling it all together, the total revenue from our summer school program, tuition is $96,000. It's and then transportation, so people, students that elect transportation is $86,400 for a total of $104,720. And then the expenditures are listed. There's summer school, the summer academy, which is what Dr. Ellis Bowen was just walking through. And then transportation is together because they all ride the buses together. So it's difficult to split that out. But the total cost for our summer program as of through the end of this month is at $309,000, which would put our summer program, our summer school program, combined with the summer academy, at a deficit of about $200,000. So it's important for us to understand that. And it's also, I think, important to understand what is, what is the intention? What is, what is the intention of our summer program from a financial perspective?
And so that leads us to our considerations and things that we are exploring for next year, such as looking at reviewing our attendance policy for summer school, how many absences we allow students to have before saying, okay, that's, you know, you've missed too many. You're not going to be able to attain credit or or make up this credit. Also, really looking into recruitment of teachers for summer school so that we could offer more in-person courses. This year was the year that we had the hardest time finding teachers to teach our classes. So we want to explore more options there as well as explore additional models. So for instance, Drivers Ed is one that is really hard to staff. And so this year, we're going to ask our Drivers Ed teams at the schools to start exploring other other models, if there are different ways to do it so that we could continue to offer it without really limiting the number of students that can take advantage of it in the summer. Also, taking a look at what we offer for incoming freshmen, if we would like to explore more, offering more credit-bearing courses for them and what that that would mean in terms of how we develop the program and how we staff it. And then exploring and evaluating the current offerings. So this would kind of lead to the question earlier about, do we offer anything to support students who are going to perhaps be enrolling into their first AP course? So this is, this is one of the things that we're thinking about when talking about what we offer during the during the course, during the summer school course, course offerings, as well as examining our summer school schedule. And if there's any flexibility with 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 the dates or especially with our Drivers Ed, if we could perhaps, you know, change those hours so that maybe they do some of those behind-the-wheel hours in the evenings or or after 12:00 PM. So we're going to be exploring all of those things. And we'll have our summer school proposal for you in the coming months. Thank you. Any questions?
I have one for Dan. Traditionally, do we operate at a deficit for summer school?
We do. Yeah. It it might vary year to year, but but historically, I believe that program is run at a deficit.
So we regularly budget for a deficit for summer school as an investment in those programs?
I would say that I budget for the revenues that I anticipate and for the expenditures that I anticipate. I don't think that's an intention to budget it at a deficit. And that's the result is the result is the deficit. So I'm not sure that the deficit is intentional in terms of our budget, but I, but the revenue, I I budget based on the revenues I'm projecting and I budget based on the expenditures I'm projecting.
Understood. But the, I interrupted the answer to Don's question, which was, do we historically operate at a deficit for summer school? And the answer is yes.
And it's the what's, I mean, besides adding more students? Because I suppose there's a cost to the program infrastructure itself, right? So is the best way of reducing the deficit to have more students enroll essentially? Or does it not make a difference?
I think the best answer I can give you is that we haven't yet taken a close look at all the drivers and the levers associated with the financials related to summer school. And once we do that, we would, I would better be able to tell you what would move the needle on that. It could be more students do that. However, if the way our summer school is priced, if it's priced at a deficit model, more students would make it worse. So it depends, I would say, and more investigation is necessary to give you a better answer.
I think this would get back to your your question earlier is what is the intent? You know, is our plan just to run the set of deficit and provide the programming for the students that that need this this programming? And that's it? Because we might, we increase the tuition to accommodate the deficit. We'd probably price ourselves out of, you know, a lot of those students wouldn't be able to then take advantage of it. You know, I think there's, you know, some understanding of what our intent. You know, I, I think there's, you know, some understanding of what our intent is, is our intent to provide a program even at a cost to the district for these students or not. And I think that's a, that's really the fundamental question.
And is that part of what you, Dr. Ellis Bone and Dr. Sanchez, that you're going to be looking into as you continue your research on summer school?
Yeah, so we're going to be looking at like the philosophy of our summer school and what our, what our, what our goal is during summer school.
I mean, one thing, you separated the enrollment data so well. I think we need to now do some of that same kind of analysis with the funding. So we have students who choose to enroll in the get-ahead classes and pay tuition. We have students who are participating in other programs in which there are no charge. So I think that would be another thing for us to get more clear on which programs by design would not carry a tuition and which ones would. And just be very clear about that with parents and students and, and making sure it's aligned with what we want to be supporting student learning year round.
Does the online platform that we implemented give a little bit of relief to staffing concerns?
So in theory, yes. However, there, as with our first, first session, we did notice that we would need staffing in order to be in the classes to support the students because we had only anticipated about 20 to 30 students. And during the first day, we had over 62 students. So that was extremely too many students for one staff member. And so we began to take a look at smaller groups. And so when you look at the research and when we have worked with, in partnership with Imagine Learning, they recommend smaller groups of no more than 20 with those courseware modules. Now with the instructional services, because the students are assigned to a teacher, those classes can be larger.
So we do need a staff member even for online classes?
Yes.
And it sounds like from what you've said, we allow students to enroll very close to the start date of the course, is that correct?
They.
Or is this year we did?
That is something we are, we will be looking into for next year. That was some feedback that we received from the school sites that although it was, it was good because we were allowed, we were able to get more kids in the program, it was difficult for staffing and it was also difficult for families who were trying to plan vacations and figure out what they were doing without knowing if, yes, this course was going to be available online or not.
Sure.
So that is something that, that we are going to be addressing for next summer.
Could the late enrollment as far as students making up courses, could that be driving because perhaps students weren't anticipating needing to retake the course?
The second semester grades, yes, some of that, it would be due to that.
Okay, thank you.
I was trying to understand, many of these academy classes were by invitation? So what is the, what's the criteria for invitation?
So the students for both, the general ed students were identified by a criteria, looking at their math and their English Language Arts scores. And so if the buildings had identified these students that were in need of more supportive services to assist with them transitioning into our buildings, along with that articulation with our sender schools, they were invited to participate in this program. For our special ed students, that recommendation took place at their annual individual education planning meetings.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Look forward tomorrow on summer school. Next on the agenda, we have a capital projects overview.
Hi. I recognize the time, so I will try to make this as efficient as I can. The intention behind this was walking through the L H S cafeteria project that we're currently in right now. And knowing in October at our F and F, we're going to have more design information and much more detailed information to share on that. What we wanted to do tonight was to give perspective on where we've come in basically the last year, slightly less than a year. And so I put in for the packet, really four attachments. One was the long-term capital projection presentation that we did last January. And the intention behind that data was to show what is on, what is on our horizon in terms of capital needs that we have just to keep this place running, roofs, things like that. This, that list did not include the optional extra room models that we're interested in doing. And just the repairs alone necessitate a significant amount of funding over the next five years. And we dedicate a significant amount of funding. We, right now, we're at about $4 million a year. But in order to meet the timeline, we're going to, we might have to look at more. So the reality is, there is not enough money to do everything that we feel we need to do and all the things that we want to do. And so in order for us to really move forward, we strongly felt the need that we need to prioritize. So then we went through a process to try to develop the criteria by which we're going to prioritize. And so that is the second attachment that I provided was, this, these were the, the various criterias that we used to help us evaluate proposed ideas for renovating to align with the things that we want to align to. Things such as our daring mission, our strategic plan, the impact of students, how many students are impacted, the impact academically, S E L, inclusion, behavioral, and then system improvement, things that, that improve our instruction or our service delivery, help, things that help improve the efficiency of our system, energy conservations, sustainability, health and safety, long-term financial benefit to the district, ADA accessibility urgency, meaning how, how bad is it if we defer this and wait on this? And impact to the broader community. Those are the things that we felt were the important things for us to consider in that process. And so we, once we had that criteria, we had a, we had several proposals sent in. And a committee of not, not a few number of people actually at this table spent a lot of time evaluating and thinking through these projects to see how each one aligned to that. And so what I wanted to do was then walk through with you, for example, the L H S cafeteria. When we looked at each of those areas, the committee looked through them and tried to evaluate based on the best sense. So everything could have a score from every different criteria could have a score of zero to three. So zero, one, two, or three, four different options. For the alignment to the dairy mission, does renovating the L H S cafeteria align to our dairy mission? The committees felt based on the language of our dairy mission, it didn't. But there are redeeming qualities. There's a lot of tangential connection, but there's nothing explicit in renovating the cafeteria that we can tie very specifically to the dairy mission. On the flip side, for a strategic plan, action alignment, we felt that there was significant alignment to that. And so that got a three from the committee's perspective. And so we went through each of that. So for students impacted, all of the students at L H S would be impacted by the renovation of the cafeteria. This is, this would not affect a small number of students in the building. So that gave us a three for that area. We felt the impact to the student academics, the S E L were also three, that those would could have significant impacts. That's a main, that is a main space in the building that even academically is, as we've talked about in the previous meetings, having a significant impact on our schedule or even ability to have a different schedule for that space. And so that was behind probably one of the drivers of being able to get more students through that system to feed them and do all those things in an appropriate amount of time. And then when we went through our system improvements, we had, we had different things that were, that had higher scores, some had lower for, it felt that this would absolutely help the efficiency of our system. Energy conservation and sustainability, that one, we, we set a two because that we felt that that would have an impact on sustainability, but it wouldn't necessarily be significant. It would be a space that how, just by the nature of renovating an old space, you were removing things that were inefficient and replacing them with newer, that would have an impact. Would, would it be significant considering the scope of our, all of our facilities? We didn't feel that it was, but that's, that's what went into the committee's, the committee's thoughts, I believe, at that time. And so I, so all of those things are kind of what we walked through to try to get the best sense of like, how does this really align? And we went through that for every single project that was submitted. We spent, I can't remember, but it was at least two very long evenings, or it went into the evening for sure, time trying to, trying to go through that. And the results were the results. And so we then, then scored, then we then put all the projects on a list and ranked them by the score that they had. And the cafeteria had the highest score. And one of the things I remember, Dr. Batson, you mentioned is like, we run through something and kind of see like, how does this feel? And it really was the committee's sense that when we looked at the end result of this, does it feel right based on everything that we've lived through? That the renovating the L H S cafeteria, is that the top priority? And the answer from the committee was, yeah, that makes sense. Like that feels like it should be the top priority. And based on the process we went through, it is the top priority. And so that felt, that felt affirming to us. And so we kind of went through and like, okay, does the bathrooms feel like the next thing? And yeah, that makes sense. And so that's really how we determined those, the order of those priorities. So that is just a brief overview of kind of where we have been, where we have come since January, really, and where we're at right now. And so looking really in-depth at the cafeteria, we know that that project right now, the design of that is, was higher, the initial conceptual design of that was much higher than we anticipated it being. And that realistically affecting our ability to do the other projects with the amount of money that we have available. And so we're not done talking about this. We're not done talking about the L H S cafeteria. But that was at least a brief overview of where we've been and where we are right now. The future for us is at the October F and F committee meeting, we will have more in-depth design and discussion around the actual cafeteria. And then at future meetings, we'll be able to, I think, talk about the broader projects that we want to do beyond that and what options you have, if, if that's a direction you want to go. And so that, that will come probably in November for us to be able to talk more about that. So not sure why I said, um. So that, that's really the summary of what I wanted to share with you all tonight. And all of you were here as, walking through this process. So if you have any questions or, or any comments, now would be the time.
After a review of the information in the packet, it looked like there was a very good summary of everything we've talked to up to this point, but no new information for us to discuss tonight. Just, this was for information and to summarize a very intense process of quantifying and coming up with a rubric and a plan and priorities and then gut checking that, once we've been through that process, is that correct?
It is. And going forward, help reminding us of the process that we went through to try to be consistent with what the criteria that we wanted to be important, to say like, this is, this is the result of the process that we went through. And that should be in the forefront of our minds when we're trying to figure out what's the next thing we're going to do. Meaning, if the cafeteria moves forward where it is, that will inhibit our ability to do the next thing on the list. And so the question is, what do we do? Do we, do we stick with the next thing on our list? Do we change the order? Do we something like that? I wanted to give us all informations that we're all on the same page in terms of what we, what the committee thought was important, based on all the data that we had available to us at the time.
Thank you. What questions do we have for, for Dan at this time?
I wanted one clarification of, or confirming my understanding, but this list of projects that we have, these are, are optional projects, not the core ones we need for maintenance, right?
Correct.
So, okay, thanks.
Eventually, we're going to have to have a conversation about what to do about the not having enough money to do the things that we want to do.
Yes.
And I don't know how to have that conversation. I don't want to have rocks thrown at me. But it's possible that the public will not like to hear me say, I want more money. But there's a lot of things that are on that list, the science labs, like, those need to be done. But we're at a point right now where they're not going to get done for a while.
I think that's a great conversation for F and F.
Yeah. I think Dan was saying, my question was, so what do we do? But it looks like you'll come with some options, which is why I kind of held off on asking that question today.
Yeah, so November, my target is for the November F and F meeting to be able to talk more plainly about what your options are.
Good.
October is going to be too soon for us to be able to do that, but we felt November was going to be the right time.
Good.
Anything else? I'm just going to continue on the agenda for, for a moment. Informational items, the F I twenty-three employee compensation report.
Yeah, this is a report that is required to be presented at a board meeting and posted to our website before October 1st. So it is data from the prior school year. It is data that contains most of the salary and benefits for most of our certified staff. It's not all of them. I S B makes the rules on what information is reportable and not. This is the report based on I S B system that we have to present to you and post on our websites. There's no action to take, there's not a required, take action, it just needs to be presented at a board meeting.
Yeah. And we did also discuss it in committee.
Yes.
And since we don't have to vote upon it, it's not on the consent agenda.
Any other comments or questions? I think it's pretty clear.
No, thank you, Dan.
Thank you. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Actually, Bryant Kelly is going to give us a brief update on our press policy transition.
Thank you. However, before I begin our update, I do want to thank, publicly thank Carol Skodin and Donna Carmichael for their time and effort in this huge undertaking. You know, once this process is complete, I believe that our D one twenty-eight board policies will be in much better shape than before. So just to kind of go back to June, June 12th, we had a policy committee meeting and our current policies procedures for D one twenty-eight were reviewed by Tammy Eng from the director, she's the director of Policy Services for the Illinois Association of School Boards. And that review is done through some general questions. And her spending a lot of time actually reviewing a lot of our D one twenty-eight materials online. So our current board policies, our websites, going through stuff. She really does an extensive search and gets to know our district through our online presence, but also through questions that she asked us. From June through September, district unique language, hyperlinks, policies were incorporated into the first draft. Clarification and questions were covered with our district board attorney and then shared with I A S B. So Carol and I communicated back with Tammy at I A S B on some clarification questions. July 19th, the first draft was completed and sent to District one twenty-eight. The first draft was then reviewed in preparation for the September Policy Committee Meeting, which was held on September 12th. And on September 12th, we met, so Tammy, Don, Carol and myself met, and we reviewed sections one through six. One of the things that did take time was that we had to go back, and thank you, Carol, we had a, I A S B press still uses he or she in their update and we re, we changed all of our, like we had in our current policies to they. So that took a little bit of time. We also compared current policies with possible optional language that was previously adopted. So there's optional language that we had adopted or not adopted, and so we had to go through that. Also ensuring that our policies reflect our current procedures in D one twenty-eight and that the policies also reflect that we're nine through 12 grade school, you know, a, a grade school district. So not, there's still some language for K through six that was included. So we had to, you know, make sure that was updated. So October 18th is our next policy committee meeting. Again, that's open to the public or. Again, that's open to the public or for anyone else from the board to attend. The goal...
It's exciting.
It is. The goals of this meeting are to answer any clarifying questions from our September review. We've gotten some materials back ready. Review draft two of Sections 1 through 6, so that's what we went through in September. But we need to finish reviewing Sections 7 and 8 and then finalize our, you know, review of draft one for 7 and 8. Our next steps is to receive at the end of October, a final draft of the board policies. Where hopefully in November meetings that we can bring our first reading of the finalized board policies and then December, a second reading and adoption of board policies.
We'll basically be voting on every policy.
Every policy.
Clean slate at that point in time.
Clean slate at that point.
It will all be updated at that point.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll be updated. You know, if we missed any updates along the way from years past or they weren't done in the ISB five-year review or law updates that were missed, those will all be updated. But again, you know, we do have some, you know, unique language. We have, our equity policy is unique to us. Our mission statement is incorporated into our board policy that, you know, we have three, three schools are incorporated. So all of that needs to also be incorporated into it. But it'll be a nice clean slate. And then moving forward, it'll be much easier for us to look at the changes that need to be done, but also communicate the changes to the board on any changes in our board policies moving forward. So it won't be as tedious process.
We also found a couple of things in policy that ISB has that we don't have in our policy manual that sparked a little discussion that at some point will probably come up. We'll talk about some things there.
Correct.
And then there was a couple of like intent questions, but, but we'll hammer those out.
Great. I was just going to say thank you. That sounds like a lot of work. So, thank you.
I, really, they're doing it.
Yeah, and a lot of tedious work, too. That's a good...
I answered, I think, a solid five questions in five hours. We appreciate you helping.
And thank you for all of your hard work to everyone on this project. No, QPR.
Yeah, thank you, Bryant. And two other quick updates to the board. I wanted to follow up on my, our fellow student board rep who acknowledged the QPR training that she attended. Many of you know that as an educator and in my personal life, I've had experiences with suicide and September is National Suicide Prevention Month. And I wanted to recognize that this was the third time I've been able to be trained with students on QPR. And it's just a testament to how dedicated our district is to supporting mental well-being and mental health. We also have, trying to publicize 988, our Suicide Crisis Line. We have students being educated on that. Last week, we, we had Yellow Ribbon Week here at Vernon Hills High School. So we have events for staff and students going on at both campuses. And knowing that that's one of our three goal areas to support the mental health and well-being of our students. I just wanted to acknowledge both Brendan Nelson, who did the training I attended, and the efforts of Amy Dillon here at Vernon Hills High School. And then finally, just to set the stage for our October 9th Teacher Institute Day, when we have been presenting the action plans for our strategic plan and trying to say what are some of the key activities that we want our staff to be able to participate in? The trainings that we want them to be able to learn? The connections, the voice we want them to be able to have? That's been what we focused on for our October 9th day. We have two days in which we have access to all staff, October and February. And so the teaching and learning team, as well as the other action planning teams, have been really prioritizing how to, how to maximize teacher input and teacher learning. So we are going to be focusing some of our time on our equity and inclusion efforts, where we'll be doing our EOS launch. Staff will be given time to complete the survey. And we want to gather input from every staff member about every student. And that takes time, so we're not going to ask staff to do that on their own time or their prep period. It will be completed during the in-service day. We will also have a speaker work with our staff. I know one caution that the board had when we talked about trying to increase access to students who previously weren't in AP or dual credit or other classes, was wanting to make sure that we had that growth mindset, that we weren't placing students in classrooms where, you know, teachers didn't have the tools they needed and the attitude that all kids can be successful. So we're going to make sure that we launch that initiative on October 9th also. We will have time for a grading and assessment committee to be meeting and providing support opportunities for teachers in the grading pilot. We also will have exploring multiple paths. Our school counselors and college and career people will be looking at the PACE framework and some of the other things that are called for in our action plan. So I just wanted to make sure that as a board, you understood we are trying to make sure that we're maximizing teacher access to the trainings. That is one of our, you know, foundational principles is that we won't support any initiative unless we can provide meaningful and job embedded professional learning for our staff. And I want to thank the teaching and learning team and the principals and other people who've been putting the agenda together for October 9th. And again, as always, any of you who might have some flexibility in your schedule and you'd like to stop by any of our sessions, we would welcome you. So I'll send the final agenda when it's published.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving along to any board comments and events. I will ask everyone to keep their comments brief at this late hour. None?
I'll just, I'll just jump in with a couple. It's not directly board-related, but it's education-related. I sit on two committees of a national tech leadership group. The, the group's called COSIN. I sit on their, their cybersecurity committee and on the digital equity committee. And the interesting thing this month was, we had a guest speaker at our Equity Committee meeting from the U.S. Department of Education, talking about the new National Education Technology Report that's going to come out, the plan, the technology plan that's going to come out, I believe, next month. But he was presenting the, the key elements of that and asking for feedback and whatnot. And I think the most important thing there is that in every aspect of that plan, equity is sort of, you know, sort of the thread, the common thread through all of that. So just interesting, you know, it helps me understand things much more effectively. And I think it, not only in my professional life, but in my board life here, it's, those committees really help put things into perspective. Just thought I'd share that.
Nice. Anything else? Okay, you said there was a brief ISB report?
Yeah, just a reminder, the October 11th dinner meeting for all those that are, are participating. They also have the joint conference coming up on, starting on the 17th of November. And then the Legislative Breakfast in early December hosted by D-128. So three ISB events coming up this, in the next couple of months.
Okay, any other reports? Okay, moving on, in addition to the items listed in 78 for future agenda items, are they, are there any other future agenda items board members wish to discuss?
Can, can I ask that on either the October or November? This will be probably Program and Personnel Committee. I received the, the delegate report for the ISB Delegate Assembly, then the annual meeting. It includes all the proposals for this coming meeting. And I'd like to get some feedback from the group on those, those items on that. I don't know if that went to everybody.
It's online now.
It's online now.
I think there's only like six proposals this year.
Yeah, yeah, there's not many, but they're, just to get some feedback on those before I attend the meeting in November, so either October or November.
Yeah.
We can make sure that happens.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good point. Anything else?
I would like to request just some type of like progress update on the new grading pilot. Just maybe see if we can get a little snapshot of how it's going or... Any feedback would be great. Just interested to know.
It'd be great to get students' perspective on that, too.
We can make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Anything else? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Carmichael, so moved.
Thank you. Second?
Batson, second.
Thank you. A voice vote, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your...